I'd like to call to order this annual budget meeting for the Lebanon School District. Could you please join me in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag, to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, without division, liberty, and all.
All right, public comment will occur during the public comment portions of the meeting, and it's done via raising your hand remotely or in person. During public comment, once acknowledged, please state your name and words so that it can be included in the minutes, and please limit your time to three minutes. Public comment is governed by policy B E D H. We are going to open the floor to public comments, even though it's not on there. Okay, we're going to open the floor to public comment. We're going to confirm that Leila, a member of the board, is online. Leila, can you hear us?
I can. I can hear you. Sorry, can you hear me as well?
Yes, now we can. Great. So because we have a board member attending online, if you can let us know if you're leaving the meeting, that would be helpful. And then any votes that we do will be roll call, just for everyone's information. All right. So we're going to open the floor to public comment. Is there any in the room? Seeing none. Is there any online?
There is no online.
Okay, we'll return to public comment later. All right, so we're going to begin today, just as a note for the board, just to remind everyone, our goal today is to get information, to ask and answer questions. It's not really to convince anybody of anything. We're going to make our comments if we've, we're not going to revisit the same ground. If we've asked the question, we're not going to revisit the questions. We're going to sort of not retread ground as much as possible so that we can get through everything. And we are going to start with the superintendent's overview.
Sure. Good morning, and thank you all for being here. Before we begin, I want to set the tone for today's discussion. These budget numbers, we are presenting our draft, an initial framework that's shaped by our strategic plan and our commitment to putting students at the center of our decision making. We are here to listen, answer questions, and work collaboratively with our community. Your feedback is essential as we refine this budget and prepare for upcoming decisions. Like many districts across the state, we are navigating fixing, rising fixed costs while striving to remain fiscally responsible and responsive to the needs of our students, staff, and taxpayers. We all recognize that tough decisions will need to be made, and we look forward to your input as we work to refine this budget ahead of us. Tyler, could you put my presentation up? And for the board members, I will be referencing these few slides. This is just a brief overwork of some information that I think it's important for the S A U, the school board, and the community to understand as we go through the process. So this is our timeline. This fall, we started the budget process with our administration, with the S A U, with the principals, with board, and today we're presenting to get feedback and looking at our default budget number and making some decisions. On December 10th, we have a school board meeting. My intention after today is to present to you a revised budget number. If we need additional meetings, we do have a meeting on the 17th held for December, but we have a deliberative session on January 31st, and I believe we need to have a budget hearing mid-January. Okay? Just a reminder, I know we spent a significant time on our strategic priorities, so once you look at the narratives, you'll see some of these, this language and the goals that are reflected in the areas of the budget narrative. So we focus on growing our students, growing our educators, growing our systems, and growing our family and community partnerships. I am not going to go through this extensive list, but we have a great school district. There's tons of things to celebrate that's going on in our schools, our educators, our students, our district. And this is not a full list, but I wanted to just point out that Lebanon provides an excellent academic experience for our students, and our students are doing well, and our teachers are being recognized at the state and national level, and seeing some really exciting things in our athletic department. So I'm really excited about that. Next slide, please. Enrollment history and projections. As you know, we've done an enrollment study. This slide was really important because there is a narrative going at the national level and even at the state level, even through our state Department of Ed, that all of our districts are experiencing declining enrollments. That is not true for the Lebanon School District, and it's actually not true for one of our sending towns of Grantham. They are seeing an increase in enrollment. So I wanted to point that out for clarification, so people understand we are not seeing a decrease in enrollment at that time. And as you know, even with that enrollment study we had, we had 17 new, fresh five-year-olds in kindergarten enrolled unexpectedly at Hanover Street. So, which is exciting, but it's just to say that lots of people are moving into Lebanon in this area. Next slide, please. Again, I think this tells a story. This is about tuition enrollment and revenue. Lebanon is a destination for people to send their kids that don't have a high school, or in Vermont that have school choice. So as you can see, from 2022 to current year, we've increased about 10 more tuition students. So we are increasing our revenue in our enrollment line. I think that's really important because it speaks to the quality of education that we have at the Lebanon School District. And it's very hard to, we're not a business per se, so it's very hard to increase revenues within a school district. One of them is these tuition pays. So I'd like to commend the board, the administrations at the high school. We actually have private pay at the middle school for providing this excellent education experience. Next slide. There was some misinformation going on on social media, and I usually don't respond to social media, but I thought this might be the appropriate place about our bonds. So the Lebanon School District carries two bonds. In 2011, the Lebanon School, Middle School, was built, this beautiful building here. We currently have $23,650,600 scheduled to be paid off in 2031. And then in 2022, we started the Lebanon High School Hanover Street construction, and that is $12,899,900, and that is scheduled to be paid off in 2042. A reminder for the community, bonds require a 60% approval from voters via direct vote on the ballot question. Both bond questions were publicly debated and modified for over several years. Tim has explained this process for here, so I know many times, in order to get this building passed, it took a few years. By law, bonds are not entered into without specific voter approval and can be used for the purpose for authorize. Do you guys have any questions about that bond piece? So I think it's just important as people float numbers in the community that we have an understanding for that. The next slide is, this is our insurance increases. From 2015 to 2016 to current day, you can see in 2015, 16, we saw a 1.7% insurance increase. This year, as you will see reflected in our proposed budget, our increase will be 19.6%. So just going through those particular years, now you see where this large amount of costs that are showing up in our budget. We did have two years. We didn't have any insurance increases. I think they call it a holiday break, Tim, insurance.
There was two different things. Premium holiday was generally on our bills every year since I joined the industry, so you get a rebate, basically a month off.
Tim, can you speak up too, I think?
There were two years in 18, 19, I mean, 19, 20, 2021, where the premium, it's not holiday related, they just said that your premiums are not going up.
Just with the slide before we move on, I think it's important, just to remind people, we did receive that unexpected expense late September, and we received a much higher rate increase than we anticipated. Between our school board and our S A U administration, we are looking at alternate options for health insurance, so we are starting to explore that. It is a pretty intensive process, and for those out there, some of our insurance language is baked into the collective bargaining agreement. So we are working on that going forward, but we feel that we should be able to explore some options and hopefully come to a conclusion late spring about other solutions for insurance. Next slide. I just want to take a moment about state adequacy aid. For the next school year, the state is providing adequacy aid, a base of $4,351 per student, which is going to total about $5,761,681. We are guaranteed 95% of that allotment, which is figured into our budget proposal. This district and several others had signed on to the convile lawsuits. And in July, the New Hampshire Supreme Court ruled that the base rate should be at least $7,356.01 per student. As of date of that decision, there is no inflation adjusted. This would be a total of $9,740,975.56 for the S A U, and an increase of $3,979,294.56. This is really important. You know, as we know, across the state, taxes are going up. This is not just a Lebanon issue. It's not a school issue. It's a school funding issue. If we were given the money that the Supreme Court said that we are entitled to, our budget proposal today would be significantly different. State aid is paid through both statewide property tax and an adequacy grant. Beyond the base adequacy aid, the state provides additional funding for other qualifying reasons. Examples are students that are eligible for free and reduced lunch, and the number of English language learners, students. So I think as we go forward today, this number is really important, and to think about what we can do to advocate for the money that Supreme Court said that we're entitled to. Almost done here. Just two budget unknowns that I think we just need to keep in mind for now. In the future, first, open enrollment. This budget season, several school districts across the state are voting on whether to become an open enrollment district. On December 4th, we will participate in a regional meeting to examine the topic collaboratively. As part of this discussion, we will also review the potential implications for our area agreement should surrounding districts adopt open enrollment policies. And according to current state law, we have added a tuition line to our current draft budget to ensure that we remain compliant and prepared for any potential financial impact. Most recently, there was a decision out of the State Board of Education. There is an open enrollment school at Prospect Mountain. Students from Epson School District enrolled in Prospect Mountain. Prospect, sorry, Epson School District has a tuition area agreement similar to ours, where those students are slotted and planned to go to Pembroke Academy. The State Board of Ed favored in Prospect Mountain. It is saying that Epson School District must pay Prospect Mountain and not Pembroke Academy, therefore invalidating that open enrollment agreement. Any questions about that? Finally, there's a new charter school opening in Lebanon. This will be a new kindergarten through third grade charter school. It's opening on Mount Support Road. They are initially, initial target enrollment is 60 students. This school plans to expand by adding one grade level per year until it reaches eighth grade. This development may impact future enrollment projects for the Lebanon School District, and we will continue to monitor our enrollment trends closely as long, as part of our long-range planning. All right, last slide. I think you've all have seen this last slide. I wanted to include it in the packet. The 2025 tax rate. The Department of Revenue Administration has officially set Lebanon's 2025 tax rate at $21.53 per 1,000 of assessed value. This does represent a decrease of 18.1% compared to the 24 tax rate. It is essential to understand the breakdown of this tax rate as it affects all residents. The city municipal tax was $8.10, which is a 16.2 decrease from 2024. Local school tax, $11.16, a decrease about 19% from 2024. Statewide education, $1.14, a decrease of 23.5% from 2024. And county tax, $1.13, a decrease of 13.1% from 2024. Just a caveat on there, with the reevaluations, property values went up, so people are seeing an increase in their tax bill. So thank you for this opportunity to share these important facts with you all, and I would like to invite up our elementary principals to review their presentation. Please welcome Ms. Roach and Ms. Whelan.
Will and Amy, can I take a minute to go over the papers and hand it out just real quick?
Sure, while they're coming up. Tim, go ahead.
So you have several pages in front of you. One is a budget summary. Some form of this stuff was in your packet, but these are updates. This shows now the rest of the summary with the tax rate put in there. You can see the old, at the bottom, and highlight the new valuation for the whole city is $3.1 billion. It was $2.7 billion. So that's why you see a decrease in your per thousand rate. This budget proposed as before you is $1.16 on the tax rate. To keep in mind, that 3.5 billion, that means 3.5 million increase in expenditures is $1. So when you're thinking about the effects of any tax rate. Next, hopefully these are in order for your binder. I tried to do that. The other, the next long sheet is a default calculation. The default, from my looking through this twice, looks like it's 1.798, basically $1.8 million less than the proposed budget that's in front of you at the moment. I gave you a major adds and subtracts page that I copied and pasted from the different, the different schools' sheets. Hopefully it matches. It should match. I literally copied and pasted it, but just sort of a summary of increases and decreases in the budget. The big 11 by 17 sheet is updated revenues based on the numbers we got from Department of Education as to what our adequacy, those numbers were really what we were waiting for. And what its budget is, is 95% of what we're allotted. That's what Mark from the state told us to budget. There's an updated budget by function. There's two that look like the same, but one says S A U and district-wide, and one just says by function. That's the entire budget. It is $100,000 higher than the budget that's in your book, and that, why is that? It's because I put $100,000 in there for open enrollment tuition. We don't know what we're supposed to budget. It's essentially about five kids. I guess you could budget a buck, you could budget a million bucks. It's kind of frustrating. But that's, I put 100 grand in there. And the district-wide one is $100,000 higher, because that's where it is. Finally, there was, there's an athletics tab that has the typical whole budget thing, but this is broken down. We had, on the front page, it says LHS Athletic Team Budget Comparison on the left. That came from the athletics department at the high school. This is high school, and worked hard to get this together. So that's by, you know, by sport. What's in the budget binder is, is obviously just kind of summed up. If you flip it over, that's the amount that we spend on trips. This is based on last year, but the 27, so there's a column for miles driven for the trips by sport. I estimated six miles per gallon, and at 3.89 for fuel. Although, as I think about it, I was thinking diesel, and we have gasoline buses, so that, this is a little high. And then you see hours driven, the rate of 27.56 is what we pay our bus drivers. So this is just trying to break out a little bit what we pay to transport people. So those are, we have.
Thank you, Tim, for those additions, and thank you for everyone for being patient as our athletic director was out for a bit. So I wanted to thank the high school for putting this together for us for today. I really appreciate your team and coming together at that last minute to get this for us. So thank you, guys. All right, I will turn it over. I'm not sure which one of you want to go first. It looks like Ms. Whelan is up with the Hanover Street School budget.
All right, can you hear us okay? All right, so for, to start with, both Katie and I just wanted to say a couple of quick thank yous. First, to the staff who helped us go kind of line by line to build up our budget this year, and just generally for being awesome. We also wanted to thank you all. We know how much time and effort it takes to put this together, and to the community for supporting everything that we've been able to do so far. So with that, I'm just going to head into, I think for you all in the tab, the Hanover Street tab, if you turn to kind of the report, that's sort of an easy way to get started with the big changes. I think what I'd like to do is just walk you through each of the big financial changes so that we can, you can get an idea of our budget is up this year, so you have an idea of what that looks like. Probably the easiest place to start us would be on the fourth, on last page of my narrative. It has the table that shows the big ticket items. It's what Tim Ball was referring to when he said he lifted them out and put them in the main grid for everybody. So in our building, we've got roughly like a $1.1 million increase. So let's talk about the big components. We have about $425,000 increase. That's due to an increase in health insurance costs. That's the first one, if you can see where I am on my grid. The next one to talk about is that we have a large increase, increase in our sort of facilities line for the buildings. That's about a $300,000 increase. There are some components that make that up that are significant chunks. One is we have to replace our fire panel. We've been having some issues with it. It's sort of at the end of its life. It's about a $60,000 replacement. We also have a playground structure that's about 35 years old, and that's another, it's quite expensive. Playground equipment is running over $100,000 to replace this one major component. And then the other thing that looks like an increase but is not quite as pure an increase as the others is that we also have in the budget to do the renovation for one classroom. We've been doing that every year to keep up, but last year's budget didn't have it in this line because we were able to pull it out of a different place. So it looks like that's part of an increase, but actually, we've been doing this every year for a while. The next one that we should talk about, and the last one, that's sort of a single big item, is that this year, we have now 72 kindergarteners, which means that our kindergarten rooms are at a point where they are at the very edge of compliance to the new school board class size policy. They actually were out of compliance when we started, but it happened at the very, very end of the summer. So as I'm looking towards next year, my concerns on, is in order for me to stay compliant with the class size policy, we are going to need to most likely, which is the hedge, add a new teacher. The issue is that we won't, we don't know our kindergarten numbers until much later in the year, so we're going to have to be flexible. And as our kindergarten has continued to add a child or two, we usually do pick up some children between kindergarten and first grade, because there are some students who, for instance, might go to like the Montessori school for kindergarten, they'll join us in first. There are also usually a family or two who choose not to do kindergarten, since you can do that in New Hampshire, and then they might join us in first, which means at this point, we are right at the policy. In first grade, we can start the year with 18 kids per class. It looks like we will be right, right at that, or a couple of kids over that for first grade. Kindergarten, on the other hand, if I have as many kids as I have now, we'd be starting the year 12 students over the cap that we're supposed to, based on the school board policy. So that's what that final big one is, which is the fourth row on your sheet. So that's the cost of a new kindergarten teacher. We did not put in the budget the matching classroom para that we like to have in kindergarten. We also will have an increase in our IMP program, and we did not put in the budget any increase in the number of paras for those incoming IMP kiddos. That one is slightly helped by the fact that we also will have some students who are getting one-on-one support who will graduate out of fourth grade, not in our intensive needs program, but that does give us some flexibility to move some people around. And then the only other sort of big increase I wanted to touch on was the fifth one in there. That will be true in both of our budgets. We took the arts and letters, which is our ELA curriculum. That is new. That line item for curriculum used to be in the S A U line. It has now been moved from there into the school line. So it looks like an increase in that line, but realistically, that one is just a movement of money from one account line at the S A U to roll up to the schools. And then to try and offset that, we also, both schools sort of went through to see if the things that I consider sort of, kind of consumable things, we've got furniture, we've got supplies, we've got things like that, we went back through line by line and reached a point where we could at least do a decrease to help offset the $28,000, just to keep that part of our budget flat. So we did remove some of the requests for furniture. Our textbook line is down, and our special ed furniture line is down, because last year we had a much bigger, well, this current year, but for last year when we budgeted, we had a very big, we had like, we more than doubled the size of the IMP program. That will not be true this coming year, so I don't need as much incoming furniture to match with those students. And other than that, I think unless there's anything else you want me to do, I'll just open for any and all questions.
I just want to reiterate, and thank you, Lea, for this, and thank you for these narrative sheets. I think they're much more elaborate than they've had, and I want to shout out to Jack Rooney, who's not here, who helped format, but I think these are really easy for people who don't want to go through these thousands of pages line by line to really kind of get the snapshot. So it is typical, and Karen Dubois could explain further, once we pilot programs, so either our math or our ELA, the pilot program money comes out of the district office bucket. Once it's approved, and now implementation, it does go into the individual school line. So although, as you mentioned, it is an increase here, but it was a decrease out of that district curriculum budget line, so.
All right, so we're going to do our questions for Lea first, and then we'll do our questions for Katie after she does her presentation. So are there any, just starting off, and you don't have to have questions. If you have questions, that's fine. Any questions for Lea going forward? Right now. Kevin?
This might be for Tim. Just curious, seeming like, is there a discrepancy between these two health insurance numbers, right, on this sheet versus what Lea has? So Lea's is at 4.25, and on this sheet it says 3.84.
Which sheet are you looking at?
Yeah, sorry, Tim's Proposed Operating Budget Measure Add/Subtracts. Everything else matches up. Great.
Show me, show us the sheet you're talking about. That one. Okay, sorry, that's the pullouts.
Oh, I shouldn't have given you that sheet today then. Trying to copy and paste.
I mean, I prefer Tim's version, but.
I don't think Tim's version is the right one.
What is, what is Tim's version? What's the number on that one?
This is 3.84, 800, and yours is 4.25, 800.
So I know the difference is, is that I, that one handed out today. I apologize. I'll print a new one today. That was done before I got to 19.6. That was a 16%.
Okay. Disregard that sheet for Tim.
Perfect.
I'll redo it today.
But everything else looks, looks right.
The same.
Yep. Thanks.
Okay. Any other questions? So this is not, and this again, this is, might not be a question for Lea. This is an overall question for everybody, and I think it's mainly a question, it's also a question for Tyler. We have a lot of lines of school-wide software. My, what I'd like to do at some point, and it does not have to be today, is to think about, are we using all of these school-wide softwares, right? Because I just want to make sure that we're not paying for things that are getting zero usage. If we are, that's fine. Wonderful. It just, as it came up in both of your budgets, I thought, just want to ask that question, and it's probably more a Tyler question than anything else, so.
Actually, I think yesterday that we had an email exchange too, as I was going through all of this, and we have definitely looked at the district level software, and our next step And our next step was to look at that school level piece and then determine usage. If it's just a more of a teacher preference or is it part of a curriculum strategy program? So that's something that our team can look through.
And that, that process is actually already started. So we do have a tech meeting with Tyler's team and our folks and at each of the school level. And that was actually on our agenda for the last one as well, as we're starting to try and figure out, okay, which technology do we use to pull usage? So that we can figure out exactly what kind of, not just how many people have signed up, but really what is the usage of each item, so.
And a sort of a related question, sorry, a related question is, and you know, again, I don't need this to be explained to me today, but I do want to understand the use of iPads versus Chromebooks in both of your schools. Are you both using iPads at certain grade levels and both using Chromebooks at certain grade levels? Or only one of you using iPads? That's not clear from the, from what I've seen, so I'm just not clear on that. And here comes Tyler. Again, this might be a Tyler question, not a you question. We're going to overlap.
At both elementary schools, kindergarten and first grade are currently using iPads exclusively and then second through fourth are using Chromebooks.
Perfect, thank you. That makes sense. Okay, Jessica?
So I would also like to thank everybody for moving to the new standardized format. That goes to all of our, everybody, it's really great. It's wonderful to have it be standardized. Thank you guys, I'm sure it was a lot of work. The kindergarten, the addition of the kindergarten teacher. So you're saying that, I hear all of the hedges in terms of like, we don't know what's going to happen. I totally hear that. And also, based on your projections, how many students would we be looking at per class beyond? Like what would, what is our projection in terms of number of students per class if we don't hire the kindergarten teacher?
So two parts. So the first will be how many students? Second, of course, is how many teachers? So my best guess at the number of students to start the equation is on page three. If you look at the, there's a column underneath the enrollment projections in my report. If you look under the column that is the 26, 27. My, basically what I've done is I have rolled forward a grade, the number of kids that we currently have. I assume that we will pick up at least two more first graders, but we've already, that number already, since we wrote the report, needs to go up by one. So my best estimate for going into first grade at the moment is 74. And kindergarten, we don't really know. I know I have 72 now, so I have to believe that at a minimum we would have 70 next year, but I don't really know because I haven't enrolled yet. And then we currently have four teachers in each of those grades. So the class size policy for kindergarten is that I am supposed to start kindergarten with 15 kids in a room. So with four teachers, that would allow me slots for 60 kids. And again, I currently have 72 kindergarteners.
Sorry, you said with the current numbers it would be 16? 60, I'm sorry.
So with the current policy for kindergarten, I'm allowed to start the classes with 15 students in each kindergarten class. So with four teachers, that allows me slots for 60 kindergarteners. The school board policy though has a sentence that says kindergarten can grow to 18 per class throughout the year, which gets me to 72. So I am, this current year, I started above the 15 per class and I have grown to the absolute cap according to the school board policy.
And as a reminder, as I started to, is that we have completed our enrollment projections. And so this 17 bubble was not in their projections from there. So again, kindergarten's sort of the wild card. We have what that enrollment study says, which would be a little bit less, but like I said, they, from there. And then as we talk, I guess, to if enrollment, open enrollment comes up or the potential for charter school student, some of our current students enrolling in that new charter school. So there's a couple of unknowns that we.
Yeah, and when I think my, my question was sort of along the lines of like, if we were to, and I can't remember the, how we phrase the, I don't remember the policy, which, what the word.
IIB, I can pull it up.
IIB, I don't remember what the wording is and maybe we can pull it up. But I was trying to figure out like if we overrode the policy or et cetera, like what would we actually be looking at probably? And it sounds like.
Oh, so right now we have 18 in every kindergarten room. I suspect that's what you would have next year.
Okay, great, thank you.
And then just to not to leave you with.
If we did not hire another kindergarten teacher. Got it, great, thank you.
And then I don't want to leave you with the, any misconceptions. So it is, the numbers change in the policy when we get to first grade. So first grade, I'm allowed to start first grade with 18 kids in a room. So if I have all of my current kindergarteners move on next year and pick up a couple more, I'll have 18 and 19 in every first grade room.
Thank you.
Jess, would you like to be, the language, I can pulling it.
Can you, is it short? Can you read it?
Yeah, I'll just read. All right, for kindy, kindergarten, for kindergarten, 15 students per class allowing up to 18 for new arrivals, mid-year or otherwise additional students who reside within the district or school choice students residing in other districts.
Sorry, so I think what I was, what I was hoping for was, what's, what's the intro to it? Do we say it shall be or it can be or we require or we, it's what?
It is a goal to not exceed.
Okay, so this is a, this is a.
It's already written as a goal.
Goal policy, not, not a requirement policy. So I think that that was one of the things I was remembering was that like, we didn't actually write this as a.
As like an aspirational.
As a like thing that shall happen, otherwise we're real mad. It's a, here's what we're targeting.
Or we're not like, if we go one over, we're not hiring a new teacher at that point we would look to. So and then we also have special permissions too. So we have at Leah's school, kids that live in the Mount Leb district that have, that are attending there and then JG Fab for students. So that's one of the things I think we can talk about future and policy too, especially with kindergarten since it's the unknown piece and they tend to enroll a little later than normal students.
All right.
Normal enrollment students.
Do we, do we have any other questions for Leah? Okay, great, moving on to Katie.
I'm sorry, Leila?
Oh, Leila has a question, I forgot, I can't see her.
I was in policy land.
Hi, sorry, I might be noisy. I have my, I met my father-in-law's with family, so if you hear kids, it's mine. I just wanted to kind of tack on, I'm not sure if I love that framing of it's a goal when it comes to enrollment when we're about to hear from Katie as well. I want us to also remember the goal of kind of having the equity as much as possible between Mount Leb and Hanover Street when we're kind of considering this request. And that's all, thank you.
Thanks, Leila. All right, go ahead, Katie.
Great, thank you guys for your time today. And as Leah said, thank you everyone for your support. My and our incredible teachers that spent, they do this at the beginning of October to set this budget. So that's, they are really thoughtful. Did you have a question, Jessica? No, okay. So I'm also going to just go to our budget drivers, that paid, the summary of the overall MLS budget. It looks like there's an increase to, you can see it's a 5.26 increase. And I was really surprised by that, but then I realized it's the health insurance. And that it makes it a, that's a huge increase. The consumable literacy, consumable literacy instructional materials, that's an increase. It's not as big as Leah's because my, Mount Leb is a little bit smaller. So that's why it's not as large. But it does help us just continue the arts and letters program that we've all been enjoying. And then we do have an increase, we have an out-of-district placement. This is, this is a court ordered out-of-district placement, not a school out-of-district placement. And as you guys probably know, there's a require, or maybe you don't know and I learned this, there's a certain amount the district has to cover and this is what we have to cover for that. I think Ben explained that last budget meeting too, about the state placement and the state aid that. And the state aid, okay, great. Thank you, Katie. You're welcome. And then we do have an increase in the Mount Leb building projects. We've been looking at our library to make it more ADA compliant. For those of you that have been in the building, there's a few steps that are in there. And so if you are in a wheelchair or it's, can be difficult to access the entire library. So we've been looking at that. And that, and then we've, we're also looking at paving some of the parking areas on the side of the school, which would be, those tend to get a pretty big divot and when it comes on Highland Ave. And then a classroom renovation and a bathroom renovation and replacing the door for the recess equipment that gets really stuck and sometimes doesn't lock. So these are all in the capital improvement plan. And so they're just kind of going through them to try to see how we can update Mount Leb. And Mount Leb does look beautiful, by the way, the floors will look really good. Okay, and then we have a decrease in textbooks, kind of as Leah said. We decreased what we needed to purchase because we have arts and letters. So we, we had in the past been budgeting for, for decodable books and other types of add-ons to the literacy program, but we don't really need those now. We, because we have arts and letters and we've purchased quite a few books. And then we have a decrease in library equipment. She didn't need the new binder, she didn't need any new equipment this next year. And then overall, we looked at what we could decrease with our supplies. And I asked everyone to be pretty thoughtful on what they needed, including the front office, and we were able to reduce that by 3,000. So it's not a, a big increase in any, we haven't, we're not asking for any new teachers or other support.
Okay, great. Does anybody have any questions for Katie, for Mount Leb? I think the only question I had, and it's not a question, was about the tech which we just talked about, so same.
Yeah, same thing. We meet with Tyler once a month and we're reviewing the program.
I do actually have a question, which is about the, the paving project, which is the, and this may be a John Kerber question, I'm not sure. It's the, it's the little like hard pack paving area right by the, as you're facing the school to the left, correct?
To the left, yes.
Okay, and how many parking spaces does it have? Or how many, like how many people park there?
A lot of people, probably more people park there than there are parking spaces because they double up parking. And what happens is when they pave it or when they shovel, it kind of takes that hard pack that's there away and it's a pretty big bump. And then there, it does make some drainage issues. And honestly, it makes it really icy in the winter because then there's like holes everywhere.
And have we, my memory is that there's sort of an ongoing like parking crunch at Mount Leb.
That's correct.
And so I guess part of my question is like, have we looked, are we looking? It's a lot of money to pave a space and then it's not, it's really hard to undo paving a space. Like it's, like, once you've done it, it's kind of there for a while. It was real expensive to do, drainage especially is really expensive. And so part of my thinking around those kinds of projects is usually like, we like to do them as a sort of like holistic look at a situation that is a problem rather than like, we have a problem, let's make it like 2% better by doing a very permanent solution. Has there been a look at the parking situation at Mount Leb that, do we have some kind of sense of like, where we're headed with this or?
So when we did the renovation, we increased our parking spaces. It's, we back up to a hill when we worked with some neighbors that didn't like the way the buses went. We talked to him too, we back up to a hill and we've used all of our space that we can for parking spaces. I don't know how to increase unless John has. I haven't yet, John, if you want to come up just to. If you have any ideas.
Is this working? Okay, yeah, so I agree with everything Katie said. Parking is really limited there and there's not a lot of land that we could turn into parking remaining. Part of the plan with this, we would be extending on the right-hand side of that gravel area. We'd be cutting in to make a bigger kind of space. The idea basically, we'd be lining it at an angle. We think we can fit more cars in there. It'd be safer because now there are no lines, it's just gravel and people kind of just park willy-nilly. So we'd be lining it, we think we can add a few spaces, tough to say exactly. The other nice thing is we can pitch it such that we don't need to install catch basins for drainage like we would at another location. And then as Katie said, like as the hard pack gets covered in snow and we plow, there's this really big lip that gets formed between the road and the gravel area. And it can be, people can get stuck in there. And then you have pools of water form and freeze in the winter, so it's just kind of a mess.
And I mean, I just, I'm trying to picture the space. Are we talking about like five parking spaces or like 12?
Probably like 12 to 15, yeah.
Oh, 12 or 15 right now is what we have.
Right now, okay, great, okay, thank you very much.
Leila has a question, I believe.
Hello, I just wanted to kind of have a little bit more clarity on the, why the Mount Leb class sizes seem to be a lot more adequately, I'm sorry, let me rephrase my question. Is there a way that these kind of class increases, these student increases that Hanover Streets is being, has been seeing can also be covered by some Mount Leb space? Would that also maybe perhaps solve the need to have an additional teacher? Or is this so tied to where the student lives that it's truly out of yours and Leah's hands and you all just kind of wait for applications every year?
There are, that's a good question. There are some families that opt to go to Hanover Street. And then there are some families that live on the Hanover Street side of town that opt to, that request to go to Mount Leb. We don't have as large of a area that, that have Mount Leb students that go to school. So I think it is where you live. And if you don't live in, if you live on the other side of town and want to come to Mount Leb, there's no transportation provided for that. And that's, so that's something that I think parents have to consider of going, going to their homeschool or going to the other school. I want to point out two things. Besides the kindergarten classes, through the work the last couple of years, the class sizes are way more aligned than they've ever been. So this kindergarten class was an anomaly. And second, I know when I did the presentation, the, on the equity between the two schools, historically, there's a road right around the Slaton Hill area that, there was a point in time at the district that preceded me and probably Tim, is that the district gave an option on which school to go to. So some people on the street, neighbors, one was going one where, one place, one was going in another place. So that is something that this board could look at to rearrange boundary lines and stick to them and say, yes, this is where you go. Because I do see that there, there is a significant number of people in that area and it is, it is odd to see where they're heading. Thank you.
Interesting, like, probably wouldn't save a lot of money, but it would save a little bit of money in service scheduling. Like we basically have to run a bus, we basically have to run a bus for each side of town down the same road. One, 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 go to the other, that's annoying.
All right, so there's some efficiencies potentially there.
Did that answer your question, Leila? Leila?
It sure did, thank you for the clarity.
And just, this may be, Jessica, a little bit along the lines of what you were asking and maybe something for us to add to the documents when we do them again for next year. So class size, just to give you an idea, so when we get, both of our third and fourth have about, as we look towards next year, they'll have about 20 students per class, both, at both buildings. Second grade looks about the same, one's 16, one's 17 kids per class. So it's really only when you get to this bubble that we, we don't know if it's a bubble or a new trend of this huge kindergarten class that we'll have moving to first grade next year. And there we're at 15 at Mount Leb for K and 1 and we're at 18 at Hanover Street for K and 1.
So it sounds like there's not even particularly carryover room that everyone's kind of functioning in tandem with each other with this bubble. Okay, thank you.
Correct, and just referencing back to the enrollment study and projections, we, there is a projection in the next 10 years that actually Mount Leb is going to see an increase in numbers with their projected building development over there. So I think we'll be watching as that comes online.
Carrie had a question.
I think that there's something, this more of a statement, to just really consider as a person who had a lot of COVID babies. We're starting to see that population come in and that could potentially be part of this bubble. I know that there's a particular difference between my oldest and my middle kids and their class sizes. So I think it's something to consider for everybody when we look at the next couple of years. Please correct me if I'm wrong because I have a lot in my brain at all times, but we also saw a pretty significant increase in people requiring services in the kindergarten grades. Is that correct? Is that correct?
Requiring or needing?
Needing services. Either word.
Yeah, so there are sort of layers to that question. I'm not sure which one you're referring to, but if I'm looking at, say, our intensive needs program.
Yeah.
Yeah, we have this current year's kindergarten class, we have seven students in our INP program just in kindergarten. So for us, that was a quite a increase over last year.
Thank you.
I said ask, I'm sorry. Ben, could you have we seen an increase in special ed trending in identification? No. Please come up.
We've seen a small increase, I think, district wide, but certainly everyone is seeing an increase on some level in all districts in New Hampshire, but it's not been significant here overall. There has been a bubble moving through of high need students that, you know, come to us at Hanover Street primarily.
Richard.
Actually, this is more of a question for Tim. This this one you just handed around again. I noticed that for most of the buildings, the total increase or the major adds subtracts is less than the budget difference, which in in on this one, which you would expect because it's not the entirety of the budget increase, it's just the major adds subtracts. But I am concerned that the Mount Leb number is lower than the major adds subtracts. On this one that you handed around, it says 49.
I think we need to get rid of the sheet. The the information in the budget documents in the binder is correct. So we're just not going to pay attention to the sheet anymore.
Well, this is a different.
I know. But yeah, right. So.
So the increase in the MLS budget is 367, 676, not 49, 540, is what you're telling me. Those are big number differences.
Increase in a summary sheet is the increase. Correct. Yes.
The increase on this one is the increase.
Correct.
Not the increase on this one.
Right, that's just that's not a budget document. That's like a tool, yes.
Okay.
So there's things that are probably not on there that that make up the difference, but the summary sheet is the is the budget.
Okay.
Like wages, wage increases on that.
Right, so I'm just concerned because math isn't nothing for me.
Add up the stuff on a summary sheet, that's the math. Obviously, this tool is a bad tool. The idea was to give you some sort of major snapshots of things to consider, but it's not supposed to be everything. Like, the idea of wages is a perfectly perfectly good example. You won't see personnel costs, retirement increases, for example.
Okay, so the number on the summary sheet in this.
Is not complete.
Is higher.
Oh, that's a good.
If you add these numbers together, you get 400 and something thousand, not 367,000.
Uh huh.
But you haven't put all the.
But these are just these are just summary. These are just drivers. They're not all of them.
Right, but the drivers should not exceed the total increase.
But there are some decreases that are not on that sheet.
Yeah.
Okay.
On the big sheet.
She only pulled out, yeah, so if you go back to the details on not.
Like like in this big thing.
You'll find a bunch of negative lines that are not on the driver sheet.
That makes sense. Thank you. Does that help?
Look at that math education right there. That was a beautiful thing to watch. Good job, everyone.
Can I?
The number on this summary sheet.
He got he understands it now.
Matches.
Yeah.
This summary.
He gets it now.
It's also in your budget.
He gets it now.
Okay, so just to clarify, the concern he has is that on all of the documents, other than the narrative, it does show the 367 or whatnot. But when he was looking at just the few narrative items called out and added them up, it comes up differently. And that's just because we didn't put all the major ones in our little grid.
Yeah, I was I think I was expecting the ones in the decrease columns to be your largest decreases. There are some very large decreases in here that you are not bragging about.
Because a lot of them, if they're not things that we can control, they just are what they are. It's not a driver of anything. It just so happens that maybe we hire someone who was worth less than the budget, so it doesn't go in the driver column. But that's a very good question.
Also, if she had a student that was placed out of district that now is at middle if now is at middle school, you're going to see that somewhere else. So it's like she didn't. I mean, I'd like to give Katie all the credit for doing this, but some of these variables.
So Katie wanted to say something before we interrupt her again.
I just want to say something about your your question about the increase in students in kindergarten. I think it's really important that a couple of years ago, we sat here and we talked about our budget and our we had a huge bubble in our preschool program because we have the we have the district preschool. And two years ago, we were requesting like an additional preschool teacher because we knew we had a real intensive needs group of preschool students. And we were trying to run an early childhood program at 50 50, but we weren't able to actually even do that because of the number of students that had special needs it required. So I just I there's they didn't just all of a sudden start at kindergarten at Hanover Street. We they've been we've been working with these kids for a few years. Thank you.
Okay, great. I think that's all the questions we have now. We reserved the right to call people back at later times, but this is all we have for now. So we'll move on to middle school and Mr. Harkins and Ms. Mills. Can't see who else was there.
Good morning. My name's Tom Harkins. I'm the principal at here at Lebanon Middle School. Erin Mills is here with me. Go ahead.
No, you go.
Student Services Administrator, our Assistant Principal, Dr. Rooney. Caroline Rooney was unable to make it today. So I'm going to kind of go through the same that the elementary principals did. I want to start off seconding the thank yous to our staff who work very hard, all of you school board members who put in tons of hours, of course, the custodial staff here who keeps our building looking great, all the support we get from the SAU. We really appreciate that. So just a great team we've got going here. I wanted to start with a note about our enrollment. For those that don't know, seventh graders from Grantham come here. So you'll see a big jump on page three as you look at our enrollment history and our enrollment projections. So for next year, for example, I'm sorry, this current sixth grade has 104 students. Next year, seventh grade will have 146 students. So just wanted to point that out. I will move to the last page. Actually, I wanted to mention a few other things that just a couple of highlights from the list that Amy Allen kind of talked about early on in her presentation, some of the things we've got going on. We have a seven students who qualified for the National Coral or Regional Coral event that's coming up. We have students who placed first in the recent Math League. Our cross country girls team came in first in the state. Our cross country boys team first fourth in the state. We had undefeated football season. Just a lot of really good things going on. We had a student this week who was won the I Voted sticker contest. She was one of the six winners out of 2,800 applicants, I think. So that's a really exciting thing for us. We have a student traveling to the National Cross Bike, Mountain Biking Contest in Arkansas in like a week or two. So there's just a lot of really good things going on. We're excited as this is our first really full year as an administrative team. We had Dr. Rooney and the two of us in place last year. Dr. Rooney was out from maternity leave for a lot of the year. So we're getting our systems and processes in place. We're proud of our school. All the adults work really, really hard and are always focused on our students. We have a community tree up the upstairs there where we recognize students for kind acts and we have over 100 leaves already this year, which is exciting for us. And just the other day, we were discussing like our hallways are quiet, but then when you open the door to a classroom, there's like a buzz of activity and discussion and things like that. So we're just really pumped about where we're at and where things are headed. And then on to again, our budget drivers. We, of course, have the health insurance increase as everyone does. We have a number of building projects, one of them being the outdoor rooftop garden rooftop classroom space. That is one of our big budget items that has been discussed at length. I do have some information about that for anybody that would like it. I didn't want to run through the whole thing, but some of our teachers prepared some information about how that might be used. If anybody's interested in that, I have little packets I can hand you. We also have our some information about the choir room renovation that our choir teacher at Miss Garden prepared. I have that as well for anybody that would like it. A number of things are just other renovation things that need to need to be done for the upkeep of the building. We need a new chariot, which is a commercial floor scrubber. Some of the consumables, you'll see an increase there similar to the Arts and Letters Pilot Program, moving from the SAU budget over to our budget. That's part of it. We also are piloting a math program for our MSM III math classes. It's just like the Arts and Letters, that'll be moving from the SAU budget over to the LMS budget. We do have a decrease for a student who previously required out of district services, now being served here at LMS. So that's a cost savings and a decrease in our equipment line. A big chunk of that was an increase last year for music risers, which you could see pictured in the choir room justification of the wall. Those have been purchased, so that's part of the reason for that big decrease. That was all I had prepared. Do you have anything you want to say, Ms. Mills? Nope, all right.
All right, do is that.
That's all I.
Okay. Do we have any questions for Tom? Jessica, we'll start with you.
So thank you also for the nice fancy format. One thing that I was hoping for just next year, as we kind of refine this, was the LHS, excuse me, yes, LHS, their version has shows in the enrollment projections and the enrollment history, the the bump from the area agreements, like they call that out specifically. They say like, you know, this many students plus this many from P and whatever else.
More detailed breakdown.
A little breakdown in there, just included in there. It's very helpful to sort of like see when those impacts hit and just have that reminded to us. So that would but this is great. So I think that the the outdoor classroom space is definitely one that I would love to have some more information about. If we I think that the conversation around that space up till now has been very much around the idea that if we were to be interested in investing in that space, we would want to have a really robust sense of its sort of curricular possibilities and integration with the curriculum. And I think that when we so the Finance Facilities Committee did receive the proposal that we were able to fund last year with the with the generous donation from the Burn Foundation. So I think that was a great step to be able to kind of get that proposal, get some more information, particularly get some cost information around how much that project would probably cost. And I think that given that it is a substantial item, it did it did feel to me like we would need a really very strong sense of its of how it would be integrated into the program. And so if you have more on that, I think that would be great to hear about.
I do. I did not make copies for all, but I can hand a few out to folks. I do need to keep one.
Tom, just quick, can you see the addition of students if you look six to seven? Like, that's the transition. You can see the addition of Grantham students, is that right?
Yeah, they come in seventh grade. They come in seventh grade.
Yeah, so you can look at the diagonals and then as well as the projection, right?
We say that again.
99 to 136.
He's solving it for.
Kevin, that would require me to do math in my head.
Yes.
Which I resent.
That is the name of the game today.
Nope, and I'm saying I'd like it to not be. I'd like it to be written written down.
I understand.
We can share, we can share.
Is there any sense if the area agreements are rendered null and void by updates to the whatever?
So it's.
No, I mean, if they are, would that would that change where the bump happens? Would 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 students be able to come at any grade?
That's a very convoluted question, but let me see if I can help answer that. So I'm going to just speak hypotheticals and none of this is like what's happening and I don't know what other towns are doing. Let's say Kearsage, which is sort of on the end of our route by Grantham, they just say this next year, they're going to be an open enrollment school. We could have Grantham students then go to Kearsage.
Okay, so we.
And those Grantham would have to pay Kearsage. Because this current open enrollment law falls under the charter school law, we have to follow that charter school regulations.
Okay.
So that is that possibility. But we have a area agreement that says your students come to us. So there is that tension piece. So we have the area agreement where we've set this rate and the set the terms. I think it's 20, 30 years old now. We revised it, but it these terms like so we might be getting less students, but still getting that same rate. And then with the current open enrollment. Projection. Yeah, proposed open enrollment, they would be paying hypothetically Kearsage more money than they would be paying Lebanon. And they would be paying for additional special ed costs that are not built into our area agreement. So that's the piece with that. There's a little bit of a known unknown. So that's one of the reasons we are trying to get together with, I believe it's Claremont, Newport, Kearsage, Grantham, Plainfield, Cornish, Lebanon, Mascoma, Hanover, Lyme. That's sort of our area that we're going to talk to see what if what is everyone's plans are. Because obviously, if two anchors go, then everybody could see movement. And it's really hard to project how many students that you would be sending. Under current law, under the warrant, you can say Lebanon is going to take 1% of the population in open enrollment. Under current law, we could say Lebanon is sending no students. That is about to be appealed with the current legislation. There is many bills with open enrollment that may not give local control any decision on this at all. So we could end up that the state says you all are doing it.
If if in any of these proposals, if Lebanon were to become an open enrollment district, can we still set the number of students we are.
Like if Lebanon just says, yes, I want to be an open enrolled district.
But we have caps.
You have to set an amount, right? But if we do that, then we still have Plainfield and Grantham coming in.
Yep.
At a different piece. So I don't want to get too in the weeds with this.
And so the question is like, at what rate do they send them? If your agreement still holds up?
Yeah, it's a whole different legal conversation, which I've I'm starting to we will need to contact outside our regular legal law firm because all of us use the same law firm. But I think I'm working on that process to kind of get information from there. But like I said, I think the December 4th collaboration meeting will have a better sense of where the Upper Valley go. Sorry.
No, and that's it's a really important discussion. We cannot solve it today.
No, no. And I thank you so much for for explaining so much in so little time.
Great. And that is all the time we were giving to it because we must return to Tom. Okay.
So hopefully.
You just passed us some things.
Yes, just the rooftop classroom. It's called Rooftop Garden on here. We're continuing our rebranding, but most of this information comes from the science teachers. The rooftop classroom is across the hall from the science teachers, so they think and talk about it quite a bit. So a long list of ways that they felt like they could incorporate it if it were more usable, I don't know the best word for that, but just a better space to use. And then also, Family Consumer Sciences talked about the idea of cooking bean sprouts, chives, spring onions, microgreens and things and using those during cooking class. Most of the feedback I got from folks was we would love to use it as a classroom space, just being outdoors, having the ability to go outside, but have a nice area to be up there. We would create some sort of a sign in, you know, sign up document so that everybody knew when they could get it and make it as equitable as possible across the building. Most teachers said, you know, I don't have a specific idea of why it would I would use it, except that it would just be really, really nice to be able to get outdoors and have a space that we could use that's clean and functional. But the science teachers, they started, once I started asking them, they're like, oh, I could do this, I could do that, I could do this, blah, 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 blah. So they made this this list for us.
And was this feedback available to the design team?
No.
So just as we're looking at this, I think this is a great list. I think it's really exciting and I'm. exciting, and I'm thrilled to hear that the conversations are happening. I think that it would, I think that the, now that we have a better sense of the costs associated with building out a space like this, it's very, it's substantial, it's a, it would be, it would be a really big investment. And I think that, to me, while this is a, this is a great start, it's the kind of thing where I think, for me personally, I would wanna see a pretty robust discussion happen with the, you know, the teachers, the design team, the curriculum program, like have a pretty refined sense of that planning, to be able to look, you know, really closely at the investment there. So I think that like, this to me seems like a great place to start, I think that the design plans that you guys were able to get were a really great start, but it would also be really hard to say that, you know, whether the design plans are responsive to these plans or not, like it's kind of hard to evaluate that without a stronger sense of how they align, and I think that like, you can't have those conversations until you have them, and so I feel like this has been a really good process so far, and I think that probably there's, there's more work to be done there. But I'm really, like I think these sound like really exciting things, and there are some, some of them are really sort of best practices in terms of STEM curriculums going forward, and sort of like what we're seeing kids respond to really well at this age, so I think that like, this is a really great conversation, I'm really, really grateful for it, so thank you for bringing it forward.
Thank you.
Other questions for Tom? I have one, and this might be also a question for the SAU to combine, but you've got on page twenty-nine of your budget report, you've got some summer school wages and things like that, and then in the SAU budget, it says that we've moved one hundred and five thousand from the school-based budget to the SAU budget, so I'm just wondering, there's also a summer school budget in the high school budget as well, so I'm wondering what we moved to the SAU and what we didn't.
This I do not know.
Maybe a Tim question.
Yeah, Tim, I know some of these things that we're trying to, Karen, do you guys, maybe you and Ben too, wanna come up, that we are trying to separate the costs of ESY and typical summer school. We are also at a point in time where we are evaluating our summer programming off...
Extended school year.
Extended school year, sorry, thank you Jess. We're also looking at our options on, to see what offerings that we have, and are they having a return on investment? One of the reasons to separate this out was, is that the last few years we're having a hard time on how much each program was costing us versus students.
So then, these costs are just the staff costs that are, that are in their budget? So this has wages, FICA, retirement for summer school, workers' comp for summer school, so the staff costs still stay in their budgets, but then you're talking about the programmatic costs are now in the school district budget? You mean this district-wide budget?
Those are staff costs, and it's a good question, I'm making sure I'm not double counting, cause the idea is that we're trying to move stuff.
So if you just wanna check on that, I just wanna...
Yeah, yeah, I'm checking on that while you're, that's a good question.
That's fine. Leila has a hand up. Leila?
Hi, I just want to, sorry, I know I'm not there, but I'd be curious what the chorus room sheet of justification says. Having kind of discussed with Tom about this, it seems like the tricky thing about the chorus room change also remains that we're having a capacity problem, so I'd be interested in what the sheet of what the chorus teacher has drawn up would, would add to that conversation.
Do you want me to text you a picture?
Or I could, I could...
That works great for me, yeah, text a picture carries great.
Technology.
You can have that one. While she's texting you a picture, I can, I mean, it's two full pages, so I won't read the whole thing, but, I mean, it's a lot of the same conversation, Leila, that we had back a couple weeks ago, the capacity issue. A lot of it talks about just the flexibility, because we have the current band room, which is larger, but they can't go into the current choir room because of the amount of the equipment, so providing some flexibility for them to kind of potentially, I, like, flex, I just keep saying flexibility, be able to flex back and forth of who's using it for this period, depending on how many kids you have, being able to fit some of that band equipment into the current choir room, if we are able to expand it. And then, so just yesterday, the band teacher was at a conference or something, and so the choir teacher, Ms. Gardner, brought her risers that I just mentioned a little while ago that she got last year into the band room, and you can just, just for a visual of, I mean, it just looks very, very nice in there, and she's not able to fit them into her current choir space, so you'll see more details that Carrie's sending you, but...
So, can I, can I just clarify? So we ordered risers?
We did.
For the chorus?
Yes.
For the chorus room last year?
Well, we ordered risers that were meant to be on the stage where the choir used to meet, but with our new schedule and our EA choice options, then we get into that whole ball of wax of...
Okay, so I was just wanting to clarify that we did not order risers that automatically did not fit in the chorus room.
No, they were, they were ordered for the stage, which now with the PE and EA choice and everything else...
I know, I think Leila referenced this, and we had talked about this in the budget meeting, I think the capacity issue is still there between the number, if we redesigned the chorus room, it would not change more than the fifty-one students that could be in there.
I think it's forty-seven, yeah, but, but what it would allow is for the, the band teacher to bring less than forty-seven students in there, but adding in the equipment of the drums and all the other things, that's what we're hoping.
Could you just share that justification doc with us?
The whole doc, yeah.
Please, yeah.
Yep, that would be helpful.
Is there like a board?
Or Carrie can just text it to all of us.
Is there an all-board email?
You can send it to me, Tom, and I'll, it's LSD Board, I don't know if you have access to that, you should, probably should.
I'll try.
Alright, any other questions for Tom? I have another one, but it's a quick one. LMS after-school tutoring, is this as a position, this is one person, this goes through many people, what is that? What is that?
Many people, yeah, so that's our homework club. Right now, we have three teachers working with our seventh and eighth graders, one, a parent educator working with our sixth grade, and one fifth grade teacher who, last I knew, didn't have any takers at the moment, but is available, so she's...
Okay.
Ready and, ready to go, yeah.
Thank you, just wanted to clarify that.
And that gets a lot, our seventh and eighth grade homework club is pretty well-attended, I don't know off the top of my head, but it's, you know, a good ten to twelve kids, four days a week.
Okay.
Every day but Tuesday.
Great, and then as a last thing for your, just for you guys going forward, for your budgeting, for the, just for everybody actually, look at John Kerber's model for how he did his budget numbers, I'd like everyone to follow these models.
What do you mean by that?
He does a good job of breaking down all of the individual costs and big things, but not listing out every single like paper thing, he just sort of says, these are clean supplies or whatever. So like you guys have on page, I know, starting on page fifteen, a list of all the school supplies, that goes for three, four, five pages of school supplies, so we don't need to see all of those school supplies, but if you're, if you have big ones, you can tell us, and if photocopies are, for instance, a giant one, you have a photocopy line, but, so just, but, but, that being said, we do want the detail of big expenditures, and so that's why I'm pointing you all to John, because he does such a good job of doing that, so...
So I think, I, what would be helpful, I think, for me and for Barbara, who works tirelessly on these things, like what counts as big, I mean, where, you know, that...
Right.
It's hard for us to decide what the line is, I mean, some of them obviously, but like, where's the line of like, big and small?
So, you can, you can make educated guesses about that, but that's why I'm pointing you to John, cause he does both of those things, so you can see...
Thank you.
What he does. Use that as a line. Go, oh, John has another question, sorry.
Just one more, page eighteen, it's the dues and fees field trip line. This isn't a huge number in the overall budget, but it seems like that we're spending half of that budgeted amount each year, yet we keep budgeting for like forty thousand, and it might be a good idea to kind of look at that line and kind of determine whether or not we truly need forty thousand in that line year over year. Obviously, we want, we want our students to go on field trips and do all they, do all that they need to do and what the teachers want them to do, but we do seem to be over-budgeting that line consistently. Really small number in your budget, but I think in this budget year, every dollar that we can find is probably good. Thank you.
I'm encouraging my teachers to try to do more of that, and I do think there's a sense now that people are feeling more of that capacity to do that. We had some folks going to the Kearsage Indian Museum this week, and I hear, I hear what you're saying, and we're trying, I'm trying to get them to do more, I think our eighth graders are gonna go to the science museum again this year, but yeah, thank you.
Okay, great.
I think I can answer your question about the summer school.
Okay, you guys can stick around for this, it's about you. Go ahead.
So, and I don't know exactly, maybe we need to be more careful on our terms, but the summer school, which is fourteen hundred functional area, K to eight, elementary K to eight summer school is in a district budget, summer school for middle school and high school are in their own, the hundred and five thousand dollars is, we're calling, it's, we've always been loose on our terms, it's actually extended school year special ed, and that has been moved to, actually to iso, out of the building budgets, special ed building budgets into the SAU, actually for this purpose, to have a better picture of what's regular summer school and what's special ed.
Okay, that helps, thank you. Alright, thanks very much.
Thank you very much, and I did forward you all the band.
Perfect, thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, we will move on to the high school budget.
Why would Tom do that to me? He's just tricking me, saving electricity. Before we start, I want to take this, thank the staff district-wide, not just in our building, but district-wide, the SAU folks, the board, I'm reminded at this time of year, you know, the important work that we all do, especially during, well, not just during budget season, but taking care of kids, and building a school district that our community can be proud of. Before I forget, I wanna thank Pam Spalding in athletics for all that she's done the last few weeks, she's been great to work with, she's been patient, and just really, really good to work with, so if you're listening Pam, I doubt it, but thank you. Also wanna thank the Lebanon community, they consistently pass our budgets and pass our collective bargaining agreements. It has become a, you know, for a number of years, a destination point for teachers, families want to move here, and it's because of the support of the Lebanon community. The, we were down in Plainfield the other night, we don't visit Grantham, but certainly Grantham is an essential part of this, this area district team, but it was just great to go to Plainfield and see who's coming up, to talk with parents, to be in that building, and so we value those relationships, those are two great contributors, we have great kids and families from Grantham and Plainfield as well as Lebanon, and so that is a, continues to be a great partnership. Facilities, it's, it's just, you know, John already has an awesome budget sheet, I guess, but, but he just does a tremendous job of responding, his team he's put together, which isn't always easy to do. Our school is a better place to be because of the facilities team, the custodial staff, and Carol, who's new to our building this year, but has been right next door for, for a lot of years, has just been such a welcome addition to our building, it works hard, is proactive, and so I can't move forward without recognizing Carol, who I just saw cleaning the staircase five minutes ago, so thank you Carol. Page two. What you see on page two is our list of goals, they have to do with the Niask finishing stage two of the Niask accreditation process, we made great progress last year, I think our efforts were well-received, we have a year off next fall, the process is completed when they come back for a fall visit, good work has already been done on that front, and we're making headway to finish what our obligations are. Strategic plan was done a number of years ago, because of this recent, not strategic plan, the vision of a graduate, strategic plan process kind of took that off the shelf in a meaningful way, and we've had a chance to reintroduce that to our, to our students through advisory, hopefully through classroom instruction. Our job that we're tasked with, as long with learning strategies, which are also an essential part of the strategic plan, they've been in place, they, we've, we've asked questions about the usage of them, and now our job, which is not, no easy task, I think, is to measure how those two tenants impact student learning, and, and that's our goal, and so we need to, we need to figure out how to do that well. I was gonna leave this chart out, there's been a number of years that we've been kind of keeping track of it, I'm not sure what for anymore, because this number is now at the very bottom, we're in this section where it's the LHS budget, which is, it used to be, it used to be for us, which was our primary focus, are the lines that we had control over, which is just a fraction of the overall budget, or the overall number that surrounds the Lebanon High School annual, you know, what it costs to run the high school for a year. It still means something as a point of reference, we have, we'll have six hundred and seventy students in the building next year, and we spend more or less the same as we did with five eighty-five, if I'm remembering back eleven years ago, that, and now, and this might be, and I'm gonna shelf this graph moving forward, because it's really not what we're looking for anymore. I think we've taken and been charged with, which I think is a good thing, taking a holistic look at the entirety of the budget, having discussions with Tim and John about budget lines that we haven't traditionally involved ourselves in, I think that work has been good this year, and so we might look at it now, because it will be no longer, and we might keep that document internally, as an internal reference point to kind of guide us, but, yeah, and the next, the next thing is population, so I'm always amazed at how, you know, as long as I've been in education, of how more or less we have a hundred and fifty students every year, I don't know how that happens, but why don't we have one eighty one year and seventy-five the next? But typically, we have between one fifty and a hundred and seventy-five kids. We have our two biggest classes, or three biggest in a row, which is our sophomore class, this year's class, and, and next year's eighth grade class, which changes the dynamic of our building. It's, our, our hallways are more crowded, our lunchrooms are noisier, our ninth grade classes, and these are not bad things, this is, these are just facts, our ninth grade classes, where we've traditionally been able to have in, in our CIE social studies classes, between sixteen and nineteen kids, which is a much different class than having twenty-two ninth graders in a room less than the state standard of eight hundred and fifty, eight hundred square foot rooms. So we have relatively small rooms with, with ninth grade energetic kids, and that changes the dynamic, so that was one of the driving factors, which we'll get to later, about why we increased the FTEs in those areas, but we've had a lot of discussion about that, and we're going to speak to that in a little bit. So we have a growing population, at least for a few years, and then you see the projections as we drop down to a more traditional number in twenty twenty-nine, twenty thirty. And again, these are fluid numbers, a couple of years ago, we had thirty students enroll after August fifteenth, which, you know, we did not anticipate, and that changes certainly the dynamic of that ninth grade class. And so, you know, we are what we are, which is a school between six fourteen and six fifty, typically, that allows us to keep a, a kind of a wide breadth of classes for those kids who struggle the most, and those kids who excel, and try to populate them in such a way that they don't get identified for having such low numbers that they might not be able to run anymore. So, it's, it's kind of a complicated algorithm that allows us to continue to, to run these The next page, the final page, I guess, and then we have a little bit of a supplement. These are budget drivers, you're not unfamiliar with them at this point, but obviously, our health insurance, as it applies to the high school, has increased, out-of-district placement has mandated by IEP teams, our textbooks, and we do have a, a rotation of sorts, it's, it's not always, you know, we try to hang on to these books even after expiration, if we're allowed to do so according to AP, especially for AP test, testing, if we can keep those books, and they don't have a negative impact on, on, on how students perform on these tests, we'll try to keep them, we have no interest in recycling textbooks for no reason. Out of that thirteen-five, we have four AP classes that APLAC, APUSH, AP Calc, and AP Gov, that are going to have any combination of hardbound text in the classroom and electronic copies available to kids, and they're expensive. Contracted services, you know, a big item there is the, is the Take Flight Program, and I'm sure you all read the Weekly yesterday, right? And so I was just out there, I don't know, I'm not... right? And so, I was just out there. I don't know, I'm not always out there. I'm not always out there. Our school's a busy place, and we have plenty of competent adults out there. But I'll go out there, you know, two or three times, you know, a quarter. And just, it's unbelievable. You know, the students are in charge of that place. Bonnie's husband, who's there regularly, was getting shaken down by a, by a sophomore about the next steps forward with regard to design. And, and it was, it was great to see. You have pieces mounted on the wall, you have volunteers working with kids, with this kind of pleasant sense of urgency in there. No one's panicked, but they're moving forward and making decisions. And so, I kind of wrote about how that formula, although not applicable in every classroom, is kind of what we're looking to do. You know, and I wish we had time to sit in more rooms and, and see that taking place. But that's certainly something that we've emphasized at both the coordinators' meetings and at the department meeting level. Anyway, we have a grant, you know, so some of these I'm going to talk about, areas which we've made inroads on about reducing cost. So, we think we're going to be able to essentially eliminate that increase through a grant, through the Burn Foundation. I'm hesitant to give any numbers. I know you'll get a final number, maybe on the tenth, about reductions, but I guess I'll speak to it now. We're up seven percent of the high school. Again, that is a number that, that, that I'm not intimately familiar with, from our perspective. But having talked with Tim and Amy, now I understand why we're up seven percent. We hope to lower that to five percent. And, and I can't imagine doing much more than that without, you know, riffing teachers, which we have no interest in doing, and which we aren't charged with at this point. Our tech committee, our tech committee is also such a more productive meeting than we used to have. At that meeting recently, people who are purchasers of technology, and those who oversee the, at the SAU level, and Tyler could speak to this, but I'm not sure he needs to, we just, we, we cut what we, what we, what we, I think, could put in play and have, and use constructively, but weren't necessary perhaps, and that we could go without. And that was tens of thousands of dollars. We kept in play the access to Chromebooks, which I think has changed how students learn in the building. We're always trying to, you know, harness their inappropriate use of that, which isn't widespread, but we want them to use them well. They're not inexpensive, and the commitment by the district to have a one-to-one initiative, I think, changes how kids operate in our building. So, that number, although high, is not anywhere near what it initially was. Tuition to Hartford, that was a big number this year, close to a million dollars. I'm not, again, again, going to give you that figure, but Amy and I and Tim have worked with HACTC on a tuition number, and trying to pin that down as best we can, so we can accurately, accurately represent that number in the budget. And we think there's considerable savings from what you're seeing now, and, and what you're going to see on the tenth. So, good work has been done in that regard. And again, that partnership is, is, is one that we want to continue to keep in place. We would like not to have to put a student cap on, on the number of students we send there. We talked to Erica Schneider at HACTC about that at length, and she sees, you know, the value also of our kids, and we are the largest school as far as providing kids to that program, and how it impacts kids. And any survey done of those students would say that that is a significant part of their high school experience. Wages. Looking at the, the board mandated, mandated recommendation, I should say, of twenty-two students, and what we see as a dip in population, perhaps in a couple of years, we're going to pull, or interested in pulling that point six FTE increase, which is a significant savings as well. Then there are pieces like custodial supply. These are things that, you know, we don't have any input on. John doesn't ask us about how much, you know, we need in that area, but they're down considerably. So, good work is being done on that end to lower the high school budget. Couple of things, we're going to get together after Thanksgiving with Tim, Bonnie, Ben, and me, and look at the athletic budget. We think there are savings to be found there. And so, again, we think that has potential to be a significant decrease. Supplies, you know, it's interesting how John brings up, you know, and this is what we have done, and what we have done, been doing, and what we do before we send you the initial budget, is we try to look at what is budgeted, and what are actuals, and then add a reasonable percentage increase for inflation, and end up there. Every once in a while, we'll, you know, we'll, we'll, we'll miss an opportunity to do that. But I think we're charged with going back, and certainly doing that with gen ed supplies. I mean, we have budgeted more than we typically use. But there's also an effort. Once we budget for something, we try to provide oversight and not encourage spending on things that we don't necessarily need. That's why I think Tim provides that Friday deadline before April budget to create a sense of urgency to put, to encumber money that you really need. And if you don't need it, it goes back to the taxpayers at the end of the school year. So, we always spend less than what we budget for, and I think there is a benefit to that at the end, that Tim can explain better than me. There is ongoing discussions about the parent educator position. We're going to be down a parent educator through attrition, retirement. And, and so, we've had initial conversations about that. And, you know, that's one of those things where we either need that parent educator as mandated by an IEP, or we don't. If we don't need to fill it, and if we can make other arrangements, for instance, that's a sixty thousand dollar savings, and it should be, and we should vet that. But we certainly don't want to go without if it's, if it's going to be to the detriment of, of that special ed population. Someone asked us to produce, and I think this is another good example, but there's, you know, there's a lot of effort behind this. Well, not really, but it, it took a while to drill down on possible savings in this area. How much do you spend on food for kids? Was a charge that we were given either yesterday or the day before. So, we spent around a figure of about fifty-five hundred dollars on food for students, staff, and parents on parent evenings. We spent about eighteen hundred dollars between special ed, the counseling office, and, and the nurse, providing healthy snacks for students who come into our building hungry. And there is a bowl strategically placed in different places. Every once in a while, seemingly a student who might not be in good standing to access that, but who are we to judge, come in hungry, come in and take from that bowl. But for the most part, and we did a little, a little bit of surveying the last couple of days, that's a necessary source of, of food for kids to function well during the school day. So, about eighteen hundred dollars for that. About three thousand dollars is spent on cafe services for guidance nights, open house, eighth grade parent night, and different events having to, to do with teachers, having to do with parents coming into the building. And we spend six hundred dollars on staff. For instance, next week, I believe, we have a, you know, kind of an apple, caramel apple bar with all kinds of things that teachers like. And then we spend too much money on a cake from a really nice place at the end of the school year. We can get a cheaper cake. Not as good. But those are just examples. So, about fifty-five hundred dollars. And so, what we have are twenty-two hundred funds that are non-taxpayer funds, that are donations from local area businesses. For instance, we have a Hannafords account that we have about eighty-five hundred dollars in now, and we get a donation from them every year. That can pay for, you know, you know, an annual portion or percentage of the food that we provide kids. We also have, and Bonnie did a lot of work on this, and you remember the Wassons who came, it's called the Fund for the Common Good. It's a nonprofit who will work to receive a grant through Rotary, and Rotary can't wait to give us, so they say, money to help feed our kids on an annual basis. So, we feel, you know, if we, all that five thousand dollars, that's something we can take off the plate completely. It's small, but as you said, we're looking for small opportunities to decrease the budget. So, maybe some more effort like that across the board. And next thing you know, we have a different number coming back in a few weeks. And that, you're going to say anything about? You don't have to.
I just wanted to mention that while we are prepared to cut the point six FTEs that we originally proposed, we do anticipate that the changes to the three oh six standards are going to necessitate some changes in the coming years. The math science positions were added this year so we could offer AP stats and AP chem. And we put it in there with the same thinking that if we need to offer all of these courses, these are the positions that we need. Through raising our class sizes, we may be able to account for that without those funds for next year. But as we add additional one and a half credit requirement for social studies over the next four years, I do anticipate that we're going to need additional staff.
Hey, great. Do we have any questions for the high school? John, go ahead.
You know, there's one outlier, and that's kind of the, the Take Flight in the contracted services line, which looks like a ninety-six percent increase. Could you talk a little bit about, kind of, we offset that. And, and so, I just want to make sure the public understands what that is and how that works.
The Take Flight program is almost entirely funded by community donations raised by the Aviation Museum of New Hampshire. They've raised about three hundred thousand dollars to keep that program going. The district's contribution is an annual sixteen thousand dollar curriculum fee. And we've covered that through a grant in the past. We hadn't received a grant yet for this year, so we put it into the budget, knowing that it was a requirement. Day before yesterday, we did receive a grant from the Burn Foundation, so that will be coming off the books. We're working on a scheme for longer term funding of that, but it hasn't been realized yet, but we're on it.
Appreciate that. That's good.
And just quickly, we're throwing around gratitude today for good reason, but the work that Bonnie has done on the Take Flight program is incredible. You know, it's just, you know, to, the amount of time spent, the, the relationship she's formed, the money she's raised, the commitment to go to these places where events are held and to showcase our kids. It's, and it's something that administratively, I haven't, I get to witness. You know, I'm busy doing other things, I hope, from afar at some level, and it's just been incredible. And it's been a, a gift for our kids who participate in it.
I'll just add that we are having an open house on December eighteenth. So, if you haven't been out to the hangar yet, that might be a good day to come. Parents and community members will be there, and our students would love to show you what they're up to.
Leila has a question. Leila?
I was wondering, you kind of brushed over that you think there's savings to be found in athletics. Can you describe what that looks like? Because when I'm looking at some of these numbers, is it just that the kind of budgeted assumption for some of these dues and fees is higher than what it, it actually is, or?
Leila, actually, I just want to hold that for the tenth, because I haven't been able to speak with the administration, with, with Tim. And I know Ben will be here after the holidays, so we can get you those too, because I want to then look at the middle school and, and things like that as a whole, if you don't mind.
I do not mind. Thank you.
Okay, Ash, go ahead.
So, I have a question, and this, this might be more a Tim question again. Again, the average of special education cost is near, nearly three hundred and fifty thousand dollars increase. And I think it would be good for the taxpayers to understand why that cost is shifted onto the, the taxpayers, and why there aren't any alternatives to it. If anyone wants to speak to that.
I'd love for Ben to come up.
That's a Ben question. I want to make sure that I be very careful, because it's really one particular student with a need.
Okay, so we will not give any specific details, but?
Yeah, I don't want to get into that, but the IEP teams has determined this is the right placement for this, for the child.
But also, is there no cap on emergency?
Yeah, Ben can talk for the cap. You know, like I said, I want to be careful for privacy for...
Ben brought, talked about this at a previous board meeting, but maybe if you want to talk a little bit about the expenditures and the revenues coming back, how that works in the state. Is that all right?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So, I, I think the point that Ash is, is trying to bring up here is that we do receive reimbursement from the state in the form of SPED aid. We talked about this at the board meeting, but certainly this is good for the community that are watching today. So, there's a cap of around seventy-five thousand dollars. So, that's what the district will ultimately pay for this particular, this particular placement. And then we should receive a large portion of that in the form of reimbursement in the next fiscal year. But...
So, if I can ask for clarity, so, if there's an average replacement that costs three hundred thousand dollars, we pay the three hundred thousand dollars.
Correct.
And then we get reimbursement on things above seventy, whatever the cap is.
Exactly.
Reimbursement above that comes in the future.
Yeah.
We front the cost and get money back in the following year.
So, we have to put the full amount in our budget this year, even though we're actually paying the full amount in the long run.
Yes.
We will pay it this year.
Exactly.
Comes after the fact.
Yeah.
Thank you for clarifying that.
Right. Jessica?
So, I am, so HACTC, the, can you guys help me find the, I was trying to locate, I know that we said it's about a million dollars, and I, we've had conversations about this, but I was trying to find, where is the line item for HACTC?
It's eleven hundred thirteen, eleven, one thou, sorry, one thousand thirteen hundred. If you're looking on the green sheets, maybe it'll just tell you.
Yeah, I, I'd love to look in here, because it says...
Page seventeen.
I turned right to it.
Page seventeen, and which item?
In the middle, the big giant one in the middle. Just go down to nine hundred and seventy-five, yeah.
This year, I looked this up the other day. This year, the year we're in right now, I budgeted sixty-seven students at thirteen thousand dollars a student. The budget that's before you is sixty-five students at fifteen thousand dollars a student. But we did finally, in the last few days, receive a better tuition number. So, there, we will be adjusting that down, but like, the time to do it is after this meeting, so. So, we, it won't be fifteen thousand dollars a kid, it'll be more like twelve-five-ish.
Okay. Yeah, I think that I, so, I think that this is a good thing for us to talk about each year, because it's a lot of money. And I think that it's great that the program is, is popular. It is a lot of money. And I think that a million dollars is almost two percent of our total budget. To have two percent of our total budget going to, yeah, I think it's seven, how many students?
Seventeen.
Sixty, sixty-five students out of almost seventeen hundred is a lot. And I think that we just want to, you know, not, I think that, like, I'm really glad to hear that we're having all these good conversations with HACTC about the tuition. And I think that we, I, I think that that needs to continue to be a discussion point, and I am glad to hear that it is. And I just, I...
I can't, can I respond? Can I respond? Can I respond? No, I think, well, one thing is that I know that we have seen an EC, a sort of pre-listings of things that the high school is offering going forwards, and sort of new course offerings. We're thinking about these. But one of the reasons is in response to this very question that you have, are there things that we can offer, that we already have the capability to offer in our building, that keep people in our building, who are interested in some of these same areas, or different areas, but along the same lines? And so, that, that looks very promising. Obviously, that has not come to us officially yet, and it hasn't come to you officially yet. But that, to me, is part of the ongoing conversation that we're having in addition to discussing and negotiating tuition as much as we can, which is great. I mean, if we've gotten our tuition down to twelve-five, it's actually really good.
Totally.
But yes, I think that it's a, to your point, I think it's really important that we continue to keep talking about it. Absolutely.
And I think that's more of that long-term strategy. Sustainability program is, you know, we have this great population here that does really well, but we are losing a lot of students half the day to go to Hartford. What offerings, as Lil said, can we provide within our current programming that doesn't really duplicate, but that can be done in our setting? So, especially in the area of cybersecurity that we talked about, and even a business career pathway. So, I think that's important. And I think in future, we can kind of talk about how that breaks down, what a Plainfield, Plainfield and Grantham kid goes to, and that impact on, for us. And one of the things that I need to speak with legal is, if open enrollment comes, are we on the hook for that?
Yeah.
So, like, there's that big unknown. So, I think that's really important. And I, last week, at our last meeting, I spoke from the takeaways from our trip to Denver, is that Bonnie's, one of her goal is, very busy, is to get a career advisory board to, to look at what careers and stuff. And then we have a really great ELO coordinator who's doing that great work too. So, and, you know, with the potential with the three oh sixes and the requirement, that might be a driving force that some kids can't do Hartford because of the elective pieces. So, there's some, it's an opportunity for us to look to see how to do that. We have the Take Flight program. There's great things happening within Ms. Tate.
I just wanted to add too, that we've expanded our STEM program this year. We now have Hypertherm, Fujifilm Dymatics, Modo Tassanari, BioXL, and Dartmouth Health, all participating, where we're sending our students to learn on the job, which is potentially equal or better than what the experience they could get at Hartford. And our community is very welcoming and very rich in its depth and breadth of what we can offer our students in terms of community integration.
I think that that's, that's really great to hear. I love hearing about those kinds of programs. I think that the, remind me, what do we, remind me of the tuition that we receive from, for high school for our area agreement? What's the amount?
It's just under 20,000. I'll give you the exact figure in a minute.
Just under 20,000. And then what do we pay in HACTC?
We haven't got a bill this year, but it's around $12,000.
It's around $12,000. And how many students do we have from the area agreement who participate in HACTC? But it's not zero.
Correct. It's not zero.
It's not zero. So I think that those, for example, would be students-
Nine students, you said?
Those, for example, would be students who we are receiving tuition from them for about $20,000. We are then proceeding to pay out about, some are, some are between 12 and some other amount of dollars out to another program for half, for being gone for half the time. So I think that, like, those are things that I think, I'm, I know we're having those conversations, and I, so I kind of just want to give credit to the fact that those conversations are happening and encourage them to continue happening, because those are not great numbers to hear.
I would also like to take a moment to encourage us all to remember how important this program is to the students who do attend it. This is a life-changing program for a lot of these students. It prepares them for the world in a way that we do not currently offer, and I'm glad that we're, we're exploring ways to offer some of these things. But I don't think we should nickel and dime this program. This is a very important program for our student. It's a major draw for the high school, the fact that we actually have this program. And I just want to caution us away from looking at just the numbers and not looking at the stories of the kids involved.
Yeah, no, I, I don't think that, like, this is, this conversation is intended in any way to diminish the importance of the program. I think that we're seeing the popularity of it. I feel like we've got all kinds of evidence that it's a great program. But I think that when we start talking about the, I mean, like, the increase in the cost of it has gone up substantially in recent years, and I think that's really sort of what we're responding to, is the fact that, like, once the cost of a program starts to breach certain numbers, it starts to, you start to need to look at, well, at those numbers, can we provide more of this ourselves? Can we sort of, so I think that, like, it's not, not meant to diminish the importance of the program or our support for it, but it, or our support for the experiences and the training that it is providing. I think that is distinct from, is this the way to provide it most economically for our taxpayers?
I agree. I think there's, you know, I'm just thinking cosmetology. We'll never be, we're never going to be able to duplicate that. Just, yeah, and just speaking from my partners and superintendent land, it's a different situation, because we are, our agreement is with Hartford. New Hampshire CTE centers tend to be a little bit cheaper, so I know I was speaking with superintendents around the state where they send kids for eight or 9,000 students. So it is different, because there's a whole Vermont, different system on, on funding, too. So it is something, I believe, that we just need to kind of continue to look at. And then as we have great offerings, continuing to review our program of studies and seeing where we can enhance programs that we have that would provide similar opportunities.
When discussing, oh, go ahead.
Sorry, Kevin had a question just before we-
I was going to say, and I think Amy spoke to this, I don't discount the value of that program whatsoever, but, you know, if, if it does become a situation in which there's an open enrollment environment, and this is a source, a way they can access that, then it's, it's a hu, could become a huge driver in the budget, and so.
And like we said before, it affects our area agreement in ways that we haven't really anticipated, and we didn't write into it five years ago, so.
Right. So it's just being open-eyed, looking forward. It sounds like everybody is, which is great.
Open enrollment changes.
Everything.
Everything.
For the worse, just for the public. It's not for the better.
Staffing and space are the two factors that are obvious that we discussed with, with Erica at the, the last meeting that we had with local administrators two weeks ago. And so, you know, they, that discussion about, or the discussion about who should access Hartford, how many kids, is taking place elsewhere, and the issues of how much it costs to, to fund these programs in-house, and whether or not schools have space for them are the, are the two determiners, I guess.
Can I ask a quick question about Hartford? Can you, what is the process like for students who are interested in participating? And I know it's been going on forever, but I didn't participate. So do you have to apply?
Yes, as sophomores, students have an optional field trip to go tour, and then they apply through the school counseling office, and a certain number of slots are available to each of the schools in the area. So we have some students who are waitlisted each year.
Do we know an idea of how many people are going for August? Or September, whenever it starts?
No, I think those are discussions that take place in counseling. There's, there is a pre-identification based on conversations with students and families about who, who are likely candidates for Hartford. I think that, is that the question you're asking? Yeah. And, and to be fair to Hartford, you know, in order to sustain their, their program and what they do there, there's been a, you know, talking about a branding effort that we're contemplating here and in the midst of now, they've made huge inroads in how they promote their program, and, and in order to make sure they remain viable. And, and so the number of students is 20 more than it was 10-plus years ago, as far as the number of kids that we send. And they've done a good job at recruiting kids, and we have been helpful in that, because we, again, we think it's a good program for our, for our students.
And we need welders.
Yeah, no, it's, the trades are really important. So when do we have a rough estimate of the number of students that'll be attending, like, fall?
Right now, we know how many sophomores went on the, on the tour, and then it's the enrollment process begins in late January, early February, is finished by the end of March.
So we have a pretty good idea before the school year ends, what the next?
Yeah, oh, yes, definitely.
Thank you.
I just have one question, and this is on page 38 of your budget sheet. And it's just about your dues and fees, and then the NIESC costs. And just looking at your, this is kind of similar to what John was saying before, your budgeted seems to be, this year is like a big jump over what your actual and your budgeted has been in the past for dues and fees. And then there's a separate line for NIESC, which has been 4,000, every, you know, 4,000 in 2024, and we spent zero, 4,000 in 2025, and we spent half of that in zero in 2026, but now we're 2,400 back in. And then it, and I'm wondering if it's actually double-counted, if it's also in that top line, because it's listed in that top line, and in addition to the NIESC. So I would just say to check that and look at those numbers, because it seems a little, it's not a big part of the budget, but just seems a little bit weird.
I agree that it's confusing, and we will look at it. Next year, we will have additional expenses because of the visiting team.
Because they'll be visiting. Right. I know it changes when they come and visit, but it would just be good to check that out. Any other questions for the high school? Okay, great. All right, so it is almost 10, two minutes to 10. We're going to take a five-minute recess, and then we'll come back at 10:05. So seven-minute recess, 10:05.
so if you can give us one more minute in addition, we just.
That's fine.
Okay. All right, so we'll start with the district office, then. All right? Okay, so we're going to go ahead and start with the district office, which there is a tab for you all for that, under Districtwide and SAU.
Right, District Office, SAU Building. Let's get right over to our budget drivers. I think this was discussed a little bit before. We are seeing an increase in this budget of 105,000. We moved that money from the school lines to the SAU for our extended school year, so we are able to track that. We are seeing an increase in workman's comp, unemployment, and liability. That's just under 60,000, and that's due to inflation pressures and an increased number of employees meeting the qualification criteria. An increase in contracted services for special education. This is a rather large number. This is an increase of $243,312.50. This money was moved from school-based budget to the SAU, and these services fulfill the needs of students who qualify for services under the Federal Act of Individuals with Disabilities, with Disabilities in Education Act, IDA. This here is a request from the Transportation Department for a tap-on, tap-off system for the buses. So this would be falling to the safety category, and this cost for the software would be about 75,000. And this would help us with logistics, safety, and efficiency during transportation. After the first year, the cost for the system would significantly decrease. We've also added one bus lease into this budget for approximately $30,000, and this would complete the replacement of one of our oldest buses, which is approximately 10 years old. This is included in our capital improvement plan, and we consistently need to update our fleets so as they reach their end of lifespan. We did put some decreases in here for the budget, district office and maintenance, transportation, building projects. We were able to reduce that budget line by 8,700. We decreased our budget by 131 for a full-time employee. So last year, our district social worker left. This year, we have not filled that position, and we will reduce that position in the budget for next year. We're also doing a decrease of 16,000 for negotiations. Next year, we are negotiating two contracts, one with the Lebanon Administrative Assistance Association, and the other with the Lebanon Administrators Group. And those are going to be negotiated in-house rather than with our attorney. And finally, a decrease of 90,000 in literacy upgrades. So both elementary schools and the middle school talked about their increase of their budget, because those were moved out of our lines into their lines. Those are the highlights for the- Those are the highlights for the district office. If anyone has any questions?
Jessica, go ahead.
Thank you very much. Couple of questions. One is that bus, bus leases and ongoing fleet stuff. Have we looked at, I'm sure we have, I'm just sort of wanting an update in terms of smaller buses, different. I mean, like I know there's an issue in terms of bus drivers and the big buses need specific kinds of drivers. We have a harder time getting those drivers than other options. Like have we looked at, maybe we start changing our fleet to provide more flexibility in terms of drivers? Have we investigated that stuff?
Yeah, I would actually, and I give Paula, so when Paula took over from Wanda, one of the first things she started doing was looking at this sort of the mix of our fleet. And so we've gone, I don't know the exact numbers, but we've gone from almost exclusively a 77 passenger fleet to, we still have several, and these are, this is, you know, 77 passenger. But we have, we have a couple of buses that are, you know, 30s, 30, so much of lift gates. We have a 15 passenger van and two 14 passenger vans, a minivan. So we are trying to right-size our fleet. You know, obviously, we still need a collection of big buses. So the short answer is yes. She'll continue to do that as she sees, you know, needs change or whatever. But yeah, that, that was a radical change that we started doing probably five, six years ago. Which, and those, we haven't really been leasing the, the smaller ones. We've been buying them outright.
But we'll continue, like, it sounds like we'll continue to have those conversations in terms of.
You're right. The smaller buses require different licensers. It makes it easier to find somebody.
I think that was sort of more like most that I was thinking about was like in terms of, it seems like this is an ongoing, this is an ongoing shortage that doesn't just affect us. It affects the entire state. And so I think that it's, it's less likely to be something that we can just sort of solve. And even if we solve it for a minute, that doesn't mean it's not going to come up again. And so just sort of seeing that we have the flexibility fleet-wise to do, to adapt, I guess, is just one thing that, it sounds like you guys are on it. So thank you. The other question that I had was, I was trying to locate in, I think my understanding is that this item is district, this is DW and SAU, correct?
I will provide just an overview, kind of combined budget drivers for the district. So as a whole, you can see what the increases of wages and budgets after we talk just about the SAU building.
And I want to, one caveat, like when this was printed, since this was printed, you'll see it's $100,000 less than a budget I handed you this morning. Because I included, since this was printed, $100,000 for tuition.
Okay. So my, my question was actually going to be about, I was just trying to locate in the full, in the, in the sheet, the line items for utilities for the SAU, and I could not find them. So I think that like I was looking at things like the.
Utility, so this is odd, but utilities for in general are 2620, 561s. But for SAU, they're 2321, which is superintendent's office. So it's 1,02321. And then.
2321.
Yeah. And in the facilities tab.
Ah, there it is.
In the facilities tab, I, in the big sheet, I copied and pasted from both, there's like two different sections there because the bottom one is, is 2321. I don't think you'll see it on the facilities budget narratives because that, I don't know if I pulled that. I'm not sure I set the report up that right, but. So it's 2321, 541, 542.
Page 28.
Oh, I'm, I'm looking at the, I'm looking at the full, the full budget, which is fine, but it's, so there it's on page 43. But either way, it's, I, thank you very much. I just, it's, they're all listed together in.
Oh, is this a new thing?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
And I have another document that's not really budget. It's in here because it was a different project. But I have a document of talking about the cost for operating the SAU. I actually have a document with those in, right there, and I can share that with you.
Great.
I basically exported them here into a different document and I'm talking about the SAU use facility, building use. That's when I did that.
Perfect. Okay. Thank you very much.
Okay. Other questions? John?
I have two. The first one is about the software system for the buses. You know, I'm assuming we have safety protocols in place now. I'm just curious to know how this would enhance safety, what the differences are between what we're doing versus what would happen if we invest in this. And then my second question is about the district social worker. You know, the board supported this position because there was a need that seemed pretty convincing at that time. How are we going to support our students if that need still exists moving forward? So those are my two questions.
I'll talk to, at least from the transportation perspective. Some of the schools use this software system called Pick My Kid. Which I, I think that works pretty decently, but it's, it's, it's not driven, it's going to sound, I don't know how to say it, like, you're, you're counting on someone putting the kid in the right bus on the system, like, so this is, it is expensive. I'm not saying it's not because this 75 grand includes all these, you know, tablets and stuff. But the idea is kid gets on the bus, scans his ID, so you know that kid is physically on that bus versus what we say happened on Pick My Kid. Also, it gives, it's interfaces with a parent. There's an app so the parent can see where your kid is. It's GPS on the buses. So it is, we've obviously not had it forever. As you know, you know, kids, kids are misplaced for one reason, whether it's, a lot of times it's the kid's fault. But the point is that hopefully this reduces the amount of a child, because you can really see where your kid is at all time. So that's, I would say Pick My Kid probably wouldn't be necessary, but that's, that's only like nine grand a year. So it's not like offset.
And oftentimes, sometimes the child will decide to get off at a friend's house. And then we get a call from the school, the principal, hey, did someone get it on the bus? Yes, they got on the bus. This would be able to see where that student got off versus us going through tape and trying to, to do that. So.
As a parent who's tried to chase down buses or waited for buses and known why they're delayed, the GPS function is, would be amazing too, to know where they are on the route. So this has great benefits, it sounds like, for the parents. I think they'll love it.
Does it require children to hold their own ID cards though?
Well, first of all, this 75,000 is one quote from the company that is our financial, Tyler Technologies. So there might be better systems that would be similar or cheaper in cost. But how they are, how they are counted for is up for debate. You could have everybody have an ID, you give everybody a PIN number, and they're probably, you know, the challenge is it's easy for high schoolers, but what do you do with a kindergartner?
Yeah.
So that's, that is, there are ways to handle that. We just would need to decide what are the options and which is best that would work for us. I don't know if I'm crazy about a kid carrying around an ID when your.
That's the thing. I'm like, oh my, I got two six-year-olds. It's not going to happen. Like they're, they're not going to keep track of that. And then it just sort of, it does, I guess it does sort of seem like it's less clear to me that there's, again, you guys, you guys will figure it out. But I guess the things that do come up are the questions around like, why is this necessarily going to be better for the kids for whom it's a problem? In the sense that like we're talking about younger kids, not older kids and.
We do have some middle schools that students sometimes that like to go visit people or take a ride maybe where they're not supposed to. So it's, you know, for any parent out there that happens, that the kid didn't get off that bus stop, there is a sense of panic. Immediately that call goes into the bus driver, the transportation, my office, the principal, and then we're going on the cameras to see where that child got off.
Yeah. And I think it's just like, how, but are we, in terms of the problems that will come up, if it's like literally, you know, elementary school kids need to remember a code. What if they forget it? How long does it take to like rejigger the system each time an elementary school kid getting onto?
Totally agree.
And so, so I think that it's like, I, I feel like totally get the idea that if a system like this worked well, that it could be a real improvement. I feel like if a system like this did not work really well, it could be a really expensive way to have made a lot of.
Thousand percent, thousand percent agree.
So just.
I have some questions. I have a three-part question. Do we know anybody who currently uses a system like this? And I'd be interested to talk to them. We have some areas of the city that do not have awesome service. What does it look like for them? And what does this look like as far as the impact for pickup, drop-off, school bus routes? Picking, like, you know, drop, the people sitting behind you, that we have issues with people blowing past buses already? That sort of, those are my general things that I think should be looked at before we make a decision about whether or not this, maybe it has been.
Leila has a question. Leila, is your question about the?
Yeah, I just wanted to comment on, on what this is. I, I would say in the kind of talks for this software, it, it, we do have, just like we said, whenever we were thinking about our cell phone policy and the way that, you know, some families in other places often will track via a cell phone. The idea of kind of not having this kind of technological barrier because the school district is taking it on is an interesting thing to think about. But I, I do kind of agree. I'd be interested to see a lot more research because 75,000, I know while in the overall budget's not the, the worst thing. But then again, if this is what the cost of this kind of safety and kind of at peace and direct communication measure is, that is something that does have value.
I'm in favor of, of, you know, leaving it in, in the budget, but of just having oversight of the bidding process by the board.
All right, I'm back. Is there a way to expand this in Pick My Kid? Is that what it's called? Pick Up My Kid?
I don't know. That's, so, you know, this, a little, two seconds of context, like this has been in the, in previous budget versions at some point. It may be having emailed to the board. Like we've been talking about this for a while and it's like, you know, it's time to at least get it the final way. So we, we put it in there in the middle of October. I said we need to have some sort of hard number. So I got Paula to get a quote from Tyler, which makes sense because they, they do our transportation software now. But we haven't explored whether Pick My Kid has the same sort of product. So that, that would be a question on the table. But either way, whether it's, I would say regardless of system, because this is so, there's a lot of hardware in here. So any quote is going to be probably around here, even, even though we, we own Pick My Kid, we don't have any hardware with Pick My Kid.
Question, hold on. We, John had two questions. That was the first one. And the second one?
Ben, do you want to come up and talk about social work?
So the, the social work position, position that Amy referenced, when we, when I came on, we, you know, one of the things we did is start to do somewhat of an audit, right, of the resources that the district has. And so we look at the roles and the, and the responsibilities of a social worker. And then we looked at what we already had existing in the district. And so, you know, what we discovered, which is no surprise to those that have been here a while, is that we have, you know, school psychologists, school counselors, student assistance providers. And in all the years that predate the existence of a school social worker, which is a fairly new, new position, a lot of those school, school social worker responsibilities were already being picked up by our longtime veteran staff. And so we felt that, you know, while it's not something that anyone wants to do, we felt that it was justified to reduce that position for the greater good.
Before you leave, Ben, do you feel as though the need right now is being met by the roles you described?
I, I do. I mean, certainly other people will have different opinions, but that's my, yeah, thank you.
And I'd like just to add too, like when we did this, this was something that the principals all felt comfortable with and with this reduction.
Okay. Jessica.
Reminder that that position is not filled right now. It's in the budget, but not filled.
So I had just had a question about the adult education budget, which is a relatively small percentage of the overall budget. We had a great presentation a few weeks ago about the programming that's supported there. It was, it was informative and helpful. The budget has also risen 190% in, for the proposed budget. Just curious about what, what that is.
So, yeah, and this is, because it's a staff of one full-time, it's touchy. So the board approved $15,000 to go towards Adult Ed several years ago. We have a new Adult Ed director whose benefits are different than the previous Adult Ed director. And thinking like, well, you put that in the grant, not really, because we're actually, the state has been patient with us in that there's a certain amount of local costs that are supposed to go towards an Adult Ed program. So it is an increase to, to meet the needs of the new director. But putting it in a grant is actually going to keep us more in violation. The state has been kind of turned, you're supposed to, you're supposed to spend at least 5% of the cost of your grant out of your general fund, and we've been doing like one-ish. So this helps us get closer to where we're supposed to be and it recognizes the need that, you know, we have a different director who has different needs.
Okay. Any other questions about this part of the presentation? Okay. So we've got another part of the presentation?
This was just kind of an overview. This is just an overview provided, just kind of for people to look at it, the summary of some of the big drivers district-wide. For why are, you see such an increase of our, our budget from last year. So we thought it would be helpful just to kind of look at these. Tyler, you might not have this. It's on the website from there if you look on the first one. So increased wages, so the increase in wages to this budget is 828,407. These include all raises according to voter-approved collective bargaining units, except for one currently being negotiated. It also includes the addition of the one full-time staff member Hannover Street to reduce class sizes and the .6 FTE at LHS to lower class sizes. So that's the total amount, an increase in wages. Next is benefits, which is our largest increase. So we are seeing roughly a increase of 1,509,134 dollars in benefits. This encompasses that 19.6 rate increase in healthcare. So out of that, 1,509 dollars, 1,150 dollars and 138 cents is just, is healthcare. And the rest are increases in retirement, dental, life insurance and disability. So as you can see, that increase here, as I talked about those fixed increase is, is significant to the budget. Increase in contract services needed to hire a speech and language person, person provider to fulfill our obligations. In the item that's called purchase professional services, some of these categories, I thought it's really important to put out those justifications so people understand. So that's just under 615,000. And these are the building product, projects that are added from the capital improvement plans that we talked about in each of the school's budget. So that is the increase from there. You'll see another line, other contracted service lines. This number will change as we talked about that tuition rate for Hartford coming down. So we will be able to update that. So at the time when this was put together, it was an increase of about 543,935. And that reflects Hartford and it also exp, it reflects the special ed placements from there. An increase of supplies, that's roughly 118,000 dollars and that reflects all of our consumables. So now we're looking at gas, heat, oil, electricity, diesel and school supplies that are across the district. There's something in our budget called other outlays. So that's 17,000 dollars. And I'm, Tim, do you want to talk about this 17,000 of the Bank of America principal?
So we have two bonds as we talked about. We have a long-term lease that was approved. It's just like a bus lease, only it's 15 years long and that Bank of America is the funder of that. And according to the schedules, while the bond, the way bonds work out is they start off high and they go lower every year. The, the lease for, it's the train, the stuff we did across the district for train, that, the principal goes up a little bit. It's still, back in the day, you know, we had these savings, you're going to calculate these savings over 15 years of, of energy saved. And Bank of America matched the payment to the amount of savings that you're going to make over year. So the longer you go from beginning with solar panels and stuff, the bigger the delta gets on savings. So the payment for Bank of America matched that. So it's not an increase to your budget. So every year though, that line does go up a little bit. And it is, it's a good system, but it's theoretical. So anyway, that's not, it shouldn't, it shouldn't be a surprise, but it is, we're trying to highlight as much as we can.
Sure. And Tim, I'll let you do that last one because we actually have a decrease in interest payments.
So when you, the bonds, they start off high and every year we have a level principal on our bonds. You can do a bond a couple of different ways. The way that most districts do it and how we do it here is you have a level principal payment every year, but the interest goes down a little bit. So year one is a pretty low payment. If you look on a bond schedule, year one is like just interest. So year two on a bond schedule is like. So year two on a bond schedule is like bam, you're full principal and a big interest payment. And it gets decreasing a little bit every year. And I would say, I tried to mention this, uh, I've mentioned this before, but maybe not recently. So the bond bank, who we get our bonds through, uh, basically it's a way, instead of us issuing, going to Wall Street and getting, issuing our own bonds, you can, you can you can link up with other municipalities in New Hampshire and the bond bank sells a package of bonds. They did a great job a few years ago and they re, somehow they reissued our middle school bonds and we saved a total of five hundred thousand dollars over the life of the bond. When interest rates went down right before COVID, they reissued those bonds somehow. Don't ask me how the mechanism works, but um, it allowed us to save a total of five hundred thousand between twenty-twenty and twenty-thirty-one. So.
Any other questions about that? I thought especially because some of the language is pretty general and not, um, every layperson would understand what an outlier, outlay is. Um, I thought this was just helpful to kind of see what the big drivers are.
I'm not trying to be, but the reason why I says that is that's how the state, if you look at the budget forms, the state uses the same language. So I figured it would match the budget forms.
That's fine. Okay. Uh, additional questions for Amy or Tim about overall district, uh, things they presented just now, these budget drivers. Okay. So, um, before we move into a bigger discussion about everything, we're actually going to reopen back up to public comment instead of leaving it to the very end. So, uh, we're going to open the room to public comment. If anyone would like have, like to give a public comment, um, you can come up to this mic up here and just remember to, uh, state your name and ward. So we can include it in the minutes and then limit your time to three minutes. So is there any public comment in the room? Okay. Are there any online?
If you're online and you'd like to speak, please raise your hand and I can, uh, promote you to a panelist. There is no public on, online.
Okay, great. Just want to make sure. Okay. So now that we've heard everything, I guess the question is, do we have any additional questions? Um, now that you've gone through some things, is there something you want to revisit? Yes?
One question that I had just as we get into this conversation was, uh, Tim, how, can you give us an update on the status of our funds? How much money is in our non-general fund funds at this time?
Special education.
Special education fund, capital reserve fund, technology fund.
I was like, what do you? What about bank accounts?
What are her words?
Slash find over there.
No, that was a good question. I just like.
The fun money fund. Do we have one of those?
It's been a long, it's been a long week.
Chapter three. Thank you.
Yep, you're right. Chapter three. In our building fund, essentially we have, uh, one point four-nine after I put money in. So we have one, we started, we ended.
Sorry, which, which, we're?
Chapter three, second to the last page.
Second to the last page.
We, we ended the year one point five. We're going to put four hundred grand in. But we have these three projects that we're gonna, you'll see on an agenda probably in January. We're going to take these three projects out. So one point four million in the building fund.
So these are, um, this is as of June thirtieth?
Yes, but the total, it says one point four, one nine, one three eight. I tried to tie out the money we're going to put in versus the money we're taking out based on what you've already approved.
Okay.
And special ed is one point nine million. And then you see the other two we have.
So we feel that those, we don't have, that that kind of covers the things that have already been budgeted to come out of those and it's a, those are good numbers now at the end of the year versus the middle of the year.
More or less accurate now, that's what you're saying.
Yeah, right. Except for interest. Yeah.
Okay. And the, um.
Those numbers, uh, from the building funded, Billy La Project Cafe and Room, those are, those are real numbers based on what you've approved in the bills that John and I have been tying things out. So.
Great. And then the, um, uh, nevermind. Great. Thank you.
Yep.
Good question. Other questions?
Okay. So now, uh, when you start talking about what we want to do going forward, what we want the SAU and the districts and the billions to do going forward. First, and I didn't say this in the beginning, but I'll say it again now, I do want to thank everyone as everyone already has. I want to thank all the Billy administrative teams and the SAU administrative team for doing the work to, um, put all of this together. We really appreciate it. Um, my comments about singing John's praises notwithstanding, everyone did a good job, but, um, and, uh, I also, uh, wanted to, uh, thank Jack again specifically, uh, for making it so clear and Jack and Tyler for making it so clear online. That was really helpful. And I think it will only get refined as we go forward, which has been helpful for the community as well as for us. And I did want to say behind the scenes, we have asked for a lot of information since this has already come and people have produced that information, which we also appreciate. Uh, and as anyone who has been listening now can tell, even since these documents were produced, there have been changes, there have been cuts, there have been suggested cuts. So we also appreciate that people have not felt like this was a monolithic thing and that there has been, um, additions and subtractions, mostly subtractions made already, which we also appreciate as well. So thank you to everyone for doing that. I guess the first thing we can, we could do in, we can do it the way we were supposed to do it, which is start with a motion, but we never do that. So, um, it depends on, depends on what people would like to do next.
I think there are a couple of options. We can make a motion. We can have a discussion and just give a consensus directive. So I'm not sure what the will of folks are.
Mind, John?
I have a couple of different versions, um, but I'm, but I'm not sure that people would necessarily agree with, with my take. So.
So one of the things that I've been looking at is just the percent difference number. We've got this seven-point-one-one percent increase in the budget. One of the options we have is to say, okay, we would like that number to be a lower number than seven-point-one-one percent and set a number at that and leave it to the people with the expertise to try and figure out where to find those savings. I want to take a moment to point out that of that seven-point-one-one percent, fully a third of that is health insurance. So, you know, two-point-three of that seven-point-one is completely non-negotiable. We like, that is just, that is just health insurance and what has been slapped onto it by our insurer. That's just, I just wanted to keep that in our forefront, in the forefront of our mind if we are going to reduce that percentage number.
And I think if we did do a percentage, I would like to do some quick back of the napkin math of just what that would translate into in dollar amounts, just because it's easier for me to think in dollars than in percentages, but both are helpful.
I'd also like Tim to weigh in on what the percentage increase is of the default budget.
Give me a minute. Let's go over the question I thought you were going to ask me.
Okay, yeah, and I'll, I'll.
But I do want to point out, Richard and I were talking about this before. So, we're talking about expenditures, but the, the summary page really shows kind of the impact. So, uh, and maybe it's probably not for today's discussion, but the tax rate of dollar sixteen makes some assumptions on revenue. So the revenue sheet I gave you is, is like ninety-nine-point-nine percent accurate. I don't see anything changing on that. But that's projected. It's assuming you don't lose any kids for area and stuff, but, um, the biggest thing on the summary page is, um, your tax rate is based on a, the difference between how much money you're, you're asking to spend more and how much revenue you're going to get, get in to offset that. And part of the revenue is how much money might be left at the end of this year. Board has said for most of a decade now, we need to assume when having a million dollars back. So that's essentially a million-dollar credit against the increase. I, I do think we need to lower it. This says three hundred thousand. That's just out of the mind, a crazy mind of Tim. But we, the reason why we need to lower it are a couple of things. One, I will ask for wisely, uh, a kind of a really early projection. And we, we're, we're tighter this year than last, than any other year I've been here. So that means we're probably going to have less money left. Second of all, when you, when you have, you finish the year out and you have two million dollars left and we send a million dollars back, that other million dollars in that math equation goes towards capital reserve funds, maybe if it's on the warrant. And also you can retain that as part of the contingency fund. So just to remind you that our contingency fund could be empty at the end of this year, depending on how things go with healthcare and paying. So any money we, we don't promise to send back, you you basically can retain because you can retain two and a half percent and we have nothing theoretically. So that's why I lowered that number. That number is obviously your choice. But that's why it shows a, a tax rate of one sixteen, based on the expenditures going up and less of a, a fund balance. So I, I think you need to keep that in mind is all I'm saying.
And I, and I would just say the, the flip side of that is also if we don't give a million back, then that effectively increases the tax rate for the taxpayer, right? Because, so just to keep that in mind, like it, there's a, there is a cost.
Right.
An actual cost to doing that.
That's what I was starting to say, yeah.
Yeah.
I'm going to work on that percentage for you. Give me a second.
Um, so this is, this, I, I guess we're sort of having a generic discussion, right? A general discussion right now. I think, um, I definitely would want to see a, some Warren articles and, and Tim has put these forward. Uh, we've talked about them a little bit, the idea of a Warren article that does include any, you know, leftover money, a contribution to the capital reserve fund. And, um, I also am very interested in the creation and funding of a healthcare, um, reserve fund, however we want. I think that we've like had some discussions around how that might be worded, but I think that, um, the creation of, of a sim, of a fund similar to what we have for capital reserves, technology, et cetera, or healthcare costs makes a lot of sense to me, even if it was a, a very low amount that we propose to fund it with. Um, I think that that would be wise. We're not looking at a situation like we have a lot of limitations on us in terms of how quickly and how easily we can deal with our healthcare costs. And I think that we want to create a buffer for ourselves and that takes time. So, um, that's something we've already had those discussions about, but I think that should be kept in mind as we, as we look at things.
And I think it's also really worth saying out loud that our contingency fund is empty because of the, uh, unexpected healthcare costs.
Because of healthcare.
That were levied against us this year of over a million dollars.
Right.
And if we did not have a contingency fund.
Right.
That would be a big problem, which means we really need to refill at least some of the contingency fund.
Agreed.
Leila, sorry about that.
Sorry. I, maybe I should just jump in whenever there's a little.
You can. Go ahead.
Okay. I, I really do support that kind of long-term planning thinking. What I've, what I've appreciated being on this board and, and seeing about the things that are helping this district flourish. It is, uh, it is that we are taking long-term planning seriously. There was no way that we could have known that not only was, was Tim, whenever he heard about the healthcare increase, he was hopeful it would be eighteen percent and it's nineteen-point-six. So even that big wallop has made a massive difference to how we're interacting with this budget. So now that we have had this experience and are experiencing this current budget season, I would just really, really offer my wholehearted support to at least putting that forth to our citizens. This is the best that we can do to, to help our constituents is to say, this is a factor that we cannot control, but we can responsibly be much better prepared for, uh, if we, if we go this route. I know it's not, um, attractive or exciting in the same way that other things about education are truly exciting, but we, we do have this responsibility with healthcare and, uh, lack of control.
Thank you, Leila.
Two things to get back to. So first of all, healthcare. So I asked school care, the director of school care in September, what do you think our percentage is? You know, she's not obligated to tell me anything. In September, what do you think our increase is going to be? And she said, we're telling people sixteen percent plus or minus two percent. So that's where the original number sixteen came from. Came in at nineteen-point-six, which includes a five percent assessment charge. So we have this million-dollar assessment, but they still need more in their reserves. So five per, if we didn't have an assessment charge, it'd be fourteen percent. So I guess that matches her sixteen percent. So that's where that came from. The default increase is three-point-eight-three percent. I gave you the language of the default at the top of the default because I want to point out that the default isn't everything staying the same. The default language is taking this year's budget, removing any one-time expenditures. So all furniture, all tech, all building stuff, not operations, but any sort of process, removing all that stuff. And then you're allowed to add in contractual stuff like negotiation, negotiated agreements. So it's a math number that's based in law. It's not based in, I mean, if that passes this, we have to make work, but it's not like, that's, we can just operate just fine. Yeah.
It's a math number. Yeah. Go ahead.
And so a little, little math, uh, you know, based on the fifty-four, seven, six, seven, four, two, five number for this year, a four percent increase would be fifty-six, nine, five, eight, one, two, two, if my math is correct. So we would be a hundred thousand over the default budget if we were looking at about a four percent increase. And that continues to assume the three hundred thousand dollar fund balance versus the million that we've done in the past.
Well, the three hundred thousand doesn't figure into the expenditures. It figures into the final tax rate. So uh, that, so that's the last, I'm glad you brought that up. The last piece is that the dollar sixteen, which is the total tax rate, twenty, it's twenty cents lower if you kept it a million bucks. So reducing it seven hundred grand increases the taxes twenty cents more than you need to.
And, and so one of the things that I want to point out on that is a million has been kind of the assumption for a while now. And if that's something that we do want to decrease, that we do that gradually. You know, I would not be in favor of going under eight hundred thousand, um, if we, if we even want to decrease um, this year, considering what's going on.
And I was thinking seven hundred fifty, so about a similar idea, just because I, I agree. So I have been, since I was on the board in the beginning, have been a proponent of reducing this all along. Wanting to reduce this, this million dollars that we're giving back, which there has not been an appetite for, which is fine. I think now that there is more of a need to do it, I think there's even less of an appetite, um, from the, from the outside. And so if we're going to cut it, which I do agree with the reasons why, and I do think that it helps us long-term, I think we have to be mindful of doing it in a measured way as opposed to seventy percent reduction. Um, that's just my perspective.
One, and I, this is not in contrary to that. I just, full picture. Just, you have to also remember that if you have Warren articles that puts money in a cap reserve fund out of year-end stuff, that gets funded after the money that goes back to the taxes. So if you say eight hundred thousand dollars, we have a million dollars, say you have two Warren articles, five hundred grand each, special ed and building, that's a million bucks. But we finished the year, we have a million dollars left, we have a number of eight hundred. That means that only two hundred grand is available for cap reserves. They do not get funded until after the money goes back to taxpayers. So if we're tight at all, CRFs may not get funded.
I wanted just to point out too, again, um, just anyone that's listening, um, back on Tim's proposed operating budget, that budget difference between the budget last year and the proposed thirty-three million, eight hundred and ninety-six. If we were given the money from the state, which is entitled to us based on the adequacy in the convale decision, we would be right where we were last year. And again, I can't say that enough, um, you know, we'd be ahead. So it, it's an issue, you know, we continue to advocate for the money that, um, is deserved for our students for an adequate, adequate education. But again, this is the burden that's being pushed back on to local communities.
I was just going to put my two cents, since I've been quiet and I don't, my microphone is not working very well. So just talking about, I, I think everybody wants to see a lower increased amount. I did hear Ian say for the high school that, um, even decreasing it down to five percent would be really tough. And so I want to be mindful of that. Um, I am in favor of just giving a percentage decrease or a number amount decrease so that, um, the principals and admin can have that autonomy of what they choose, um, they really need and what might be able to let go. Anticipate there will be a lot of projects from the CIP being held off again. So being mindful of that. And just really thinking about, you know, being aware of the increase in taxes and continuing to meet the needs of these students and taking care of our staff. Um, it's a very complex issue. And so I just kind of want to recognize the percentage that gets chosen to decrease is not taken lightly with anybody. Also in terms of the Warren article for some sort of fund for healthcare costs, I also am supportive of presenting that to the voters. The voters can reject it or accept it. But, you know, having them have some sort of a say and the voters can reach out to us in the meantime of what they would like to see and how they would like to shape that. And then I agree a, a decrease, I agree with John on a gradual decrease. I am more comfortable with in terms of, if we're going to decrease from a million, not a significant cut would be what I would support. And that's all I was going to say. if we're gonna decrease from a million, not a significant cut would be what I would support. And that's all I was gonna say.
So I, I really appreciate this process. I think that it's been a good conversation throughout, and I think everybody's worked up really hard on it. So thank you to everyone involved. I also support the idea of a, either, I'm, I feel comfortable with either a percentage cut or a dollar figure. I don't, they're interchangeable. I prefer that to going through line by line and selecting items that we wish to cut, because I prefer to put that trust in the people who we, who are most knowledgeable about the programs and where they feel that those things can come. We've had a good conversation around those things, so I feel like we all have, share an understanding of that. At the same time, or in addition. I did want to throw a couple of numbers out there. I think that the, the CIP process has been, I think, a really good one overall. I think John Kerber and his team and Tim have been great about that. I think that there's a lot of insight available now for the board and the community into the kinds of projects that we are proposing funding. To throw out some numbers, so that people have, can put those numbers into context. Currently, our buildings that the district owns are assessed at 60,379,415. That's the assessed value of the buildings that the district owns. Those are facilities that we steward for the community, that the community paid for and that we are in charge of stewarding. The replacement value on those buildings is higher than the assessed value. The, by, depends, I mean, numbers, numbers vary, but it's a higher number to replace those buildings than it is to maintain them. Standard benchmark in terms of maintenance budgets for commercial real estate, and schools would sort of vaguely fall into that category, is between 2% to 5% of a property's replacement asset value. That's a standard. That's what you should be budgeting in order to maintain your buildings. Currently, or I should say, in 2024, we spent 0% of our assessed value on maintenance and capital projects. 0%. In 2025, we spent 0.48% of our assessed value. In 2026, we have budgeted 0.59% of our assessed value. This year, we are proposing, because we now have a capital, now we have a CIP, we have been able to look at these things, we've had these conversations, we are now proposing a 1.8% maintenance budget for our 60 million dollars worth of property. Excuse me. So I think that I absolutely support this community's effort to be financially responsible, to be responsive to the needs of our taxpayers. At the same time, I think that short-term thinking costs a lot of money in the long term. And if we think that the best way to lower our budget is simply by cutting the maintenance of our buildings and the upkeep of our buildings, that's a very expensive way to do it in the long term. And so I, again, I'm very much in favor of allowing what, we have a great team in place. We have excellent people who can make decisions about these projects, where the money is best spent. I don't feel like anything has come forward that hasn't had some thought put into it, but I also feel like those teams are best equipped to be able to go back and look again and say like, okay, these are things we could wait on, these are things that maybe aren't ready yet. I would prefer to have those teams do that work. But I would say, we have been under-investing in our facilities for a long time. And this, the amount that is in there now is barely meeting what would be considered a basic maintenance, a basic maintenance and upkeep to steward the resources that this community has purchased for us for the future. So.
I think we do need to make a distinction though between capital improvement and maintenance, because I think we're, those are two different things, because we do spend money on maintenance every year. And we have been spending money on maintenance every year.
Speak to that, because we've actually had this conversation in the FNF community.
Let's, but let's say it publicly, because it make it seem like we have not spent money on maintenance, which is absolutely not true. So we have spent money on maintenance.
So the distinctions, and I think it's a, it's a completely real and valid point. We have been calling something a capital improvement plan, capital improvements when, and we've struggled with this a little bit. What's the difference between a capital improvement and maintenance? So for example, the renovation of a classroom, when we go through and renovate a classroom, is that a capital improvement? It's a little fuzzy, because really what we're doing is maintaining a classroom, but it's a big, complicated maintenance project. So I think we're calling the renovation of a classroom a capital improvement. Okay, that's, that's a decision that we've made. We're also calling the replacement of non-functional items like, that are in the capital. You can go through and look at them. We do classify them in there. It's all classified. John's done a great job. Almost everything that's in there, with a few exceptions, is maintenance. That is distinct from things like, what's not included in the capital improvement plan is things like our maintenance staff, cleaning supplies, things like that. Even if you factored our entire facility's budget, everyone who works for us, if you factored that entire budget in, we are still, we are, and that includes, the entire facility's budget includes things like electricity, et cetera, everything else, we are still very much not spending a lot of money. And I can give you percentages, but I don't want to, I don't want to go into that.
The point's made. That makes, that makes sense.
No, we are not looking at, these are not like, we're spending a lot of money on new service items. We are spending on maintenance items and upkeep items.
Okay.
I want to kind of piggyback on that of like, you know, just as an example too. For instance, Hanover Street, one of the things proposed in this budget is updating a piece of playground equipment that is not like, it's extremely old, it's not very accessible, it doesn't actually kind of meet those requirements. Similarly, Mount Leb is trying to make their library a lot more friendly for, for wheelchair and other usage for, for everyone. And, and I think that is a good example of places where we obviously see value that this is important, but somehow even these really obviously valued capital improvement projects somehow get knocked to the next year. And I'd really like to see for, just as those examples, that we're not putting folks in a position of like, obviously, education comes first, but, and when you have to make these hard decisions, it feels like these really good, long-term things of, oh, I wish we had this years ago, doesn't keep getting knocked down the road.
I think part of the issue too is that, especially in this climate, in this reevaluation season, in this tax season, that we have to, more than ever, from my perspective as a board, our job is to distinguish between needs and wants. And, and sometimes that's really, really hard to do. That's hard to do in your own budget, but it's definitely hard to do in this kind of a budget. But I think that there are, there are, there are ways in which if we had the extra $3 million from the state, that we could do a lot of things here, we don't. And if we had valuations that weren't astronomical, we could do different things. We don't. So we have some realities happening in our town that I think we just have to be cognizant of. And that means that, from my perspective, to be fiscally sound, we have to make cuts. Where those cuts happen, goes back to Jessica's point, I want the professionals to decide where those cuts happen, because I can go in with a red pen and say, this, 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 but that is just me, layperson saying that. And I would much rather people decide who know better. John, you gonna say something?
No, I think Kevin wants to say something.
But, so if the increase is 7.1%, and, thanks for the math, there, Ash. Subtract out the 2.3%, that's 4.8%. Like, I don't think you should be punished for the increase in healthcare costs, right? So that leaves 4.8%. That feels to me like the number, I don't know, I don't know, the one we should be looking at there, right? So that's kind of the increase. Like, are we comfortable with that? To me, that feels like the question.
I think I would just need to, I would just need to know what that number is in real dollars. As you've seen from the presented budget, there's a lot of fixed costs. And then, you know, we can go through line by line and everywhere, but to get to a larger number, it's facility projects or people. And I will do what this board directs me to do with whatever, whatever number that you give me, but I will always have to put students first. But I think it's important when we get to that number, what that is, and just the reality of that.
I, it's, it's a hard year, and we could debate for hours and talk about this for hours. And in the interest of moving along, I'm gonna apologize to the administration, but I'm gonna make a motion. And the motion is to direct the administration to come back to us with a budget of, and I'm gonna give you four different numbers. 58,663,737, that's a 7% increase. 58,663,737, that's a 7% increase. I'd like to see 57,505,796.
He's asking for four different budgets. That's what he said, four different versions of cuts. Go ahead.
Sorry, John, what percent is the 57? Do?
That's 5%.
5%.
56,958,122, that's 4%. And finally, 55,862,774, that's 2%. And before someone seconds or not, I'll tell you my justification. My justification is I want the community to see the impact on students at 2% and at 4%. My belief is that the administration has done a lot of great work, and that they have put forward a budget as best they can, given the financial situation that they have been put in. And I think the community should know that these are the types of impacts that our students are gonna feel at 2% and 4%. And then we can talk about a 5% and 7% budget and why most of us probably, including me, are gonna support that. So that's my, my reasoning, and hopefully someone will second it or come up with something better.
I would like to modify your proposal.
What do you got?
Instead of 4%, 3.83.
And why?
That's the default. I think, I think one of the four options should be the default budget, so the, so the district can know what that's going to mean.
I hear you, and I didn't include the default intentionally.
Yeah.
Because the default, how you get to the default mathematically is very different how you get to a number. And it actually gives us a fifth option. And, you know, I figured that would only help us.
Yeah. My only concern is that the default is actually on the, on the, on the ballot.
Right.
Regardless of what we decide.
Right. No, I mean, I, I agree. I would say, I like, so what John's essentially saying is that we, the default is already a fifth option. So you see all of those together. So I, I agree with the reasoning for that, me personally.
I second the motion.
Okay, we've got a motion and a second. Carrie, go ahead.
I was just observing that, you're, I like that. So like default is the number pulled out of the air basically, and 4% it would at least require us to do some work, so it's also pretty close, so.
Yeah, correct. And that's my thinking. I, I believe that what they come up with, with 4% is gonna look very different than the default budget, you know?
I thought the default budget was a default, was a, was a number that was set. Regardless of the calculation that creates the default budget, we can still choose to spend the default budget as, as we want.
It is a bottom-line budget, yes.
Yeah. But it takes out certain, like, doesn't account for certain things we know have to, have to have operationally to.
Right. That's why I want to know what we'd actually, what.
What would we cut?
Operating on the default budget would look like. What would we have to cut to actually live within the default budget?
I guess what I'm saying is that it's 0.17% away from John's 4% thing, so.
Yeah, that's why I was suggesting it specifically. Yeah, fair enough. I guess 0.1 half doesn't.
Carrie is patiently waiting. Yes, go ahead.
So I, I like this idea. I think that kind of seeing things and seeing what would need to be cut is really important. I think one of the pieces that I personally look at as a school board member is how to serve everybody. So we have, we have a large population of students who have really, really invested families, who show up all the time. We have a large population of people who show up as much as they possibly can, and making sure that, that, I'm not supposed to use this word, but I'm gonna use it anyway, equity is there, I think is really important. So that's something that personally I'm gonna look at when we relook at this budget. What I've been looking at today, but just to share.
Thank you.
Can I also ask, just for the next meeting, I know this is related and it's not actually specifically about this motion, but could, could I ask Tim to produce a, an effect, effective rate on the rate increase for each $100,000 we choose to include or not include on the impact of the general?
Yeah, that's easy.
Yeah, okay.
So.
I just can't, I was trying to do the math in my head and I just can't do it.
So keeping your head, again, I said earlier, 3.5 billion dollar valuation, so 3, 3.5 million is a dollar, so 350,000 is 10 cents. So that gets you a ballpark.
This is easy for you in your head. That's why he wants to have it written down.
Drop, drop is your, or not, but drop is your.
No, 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 we just want to see it. It's too hard for our heads.
What is 10 cents on a 10.36%? Am I?
Yeah, it's too much.
So is, this may not be exactly what you're saying, but it may be, because I get lost in the words while we're doing it. But I think one of the things we've done in the past is looked at the, the actual dollar impact on. Yep. And so what I'm looking for is that as we go, is that we look at that in the event of each of these different, that we'd sort of be queued up to look at it. And the way that I've preferred to look at it, it's very helpful for me, and I, I think others have felt similarly, to have the little number down in your spreadsheet where it says, you know, for a house assessed, and we've changed this over the years, but the, based on the increase in appraisal, in assessments, but a house valued at, I like 300,000, 500,000, and a million dollars. Those are just sort of like, you know, they're, they're not perfect numbers for everybody, but.
I always suggest we start at four.
Okay.
Four, 450. I mean, with your, with your valuations, I believe that you might as well start at a realistic.
Four, but so I, I think the, my point is I'd be looking for three numbers, sort of. Truthfully, I like, I like a lower number than four, because I think that there are still houses in Lebanon assessed at less than $400,000.
I don't know where you find them.
Well, I, I can tell you where you found them. So I'm, I'm sorry y'all don't know where they are, but I do. And so they do exist, but if we, if the group wants four, that's fine. I can do the math on it. So maybe four, six, and a million. That's very helpful. So thank you.
I guess my only concern would be asking, you know, the administration to make sort of five plans, right?
All right. What do you think about the feasibility? That's my next question.
I think, well, my thought on this, Tim, and I will look to you, because you're the numbers guy. We're basically looking at numbers. So what we do is produce a list of cuts and prioritize them. And then you'll see as you go down, more things added. So does that make sense?
Yeah, I think we can do a list, a list of cuts to get to each level. And then I'll, this summary sheet has, I'll just change it from three, five, and a million to, to whatever you want. And I'll do a summary sheet for each level. So you won't see it school by school, but you'll see a list of cuts to get you to the number you want, and then the effect. So it's actually pretty, should be pretty easy.
That makes sense.
Before we vote, I, I just want to say that I, I thank the administrators for all their work. I understand, keenly aware that I'm asking a lot. I don't think that this community has kind of done this, done it in this way before, but I do think it's an opportunity to show everyone in our community the impacts of our cuts, and that we don't take them lightly, so.
I think Leila had a question.
I, I want to piggyback off of that, John. I want to say what's kind of different about this is I, I hope that the voters feel with how much respect we are approaching this. And I know it's been an incredible heavy lift already just to get to this point. So what I like about this motion of a 7%, a 5%, a 4, and a 2% increase is I think that this is a little different when there, when I, I think I can speak. I mean, I speak as myself, as a citizen, but a lot of taxpayers felt really intimidated last tax season, whenever it, that the talks were very dramatic of what the tax increase might be at the city level. And I hope nobody feels that's what's happening with this motion. I think this motion is very pragmatic and reasonable of what, what does a 1% or 2% difference make, and that there's no kind of hoodwinking, there's no kind of gotcha behind this. This is obviously done with best faith so that we can serve a really concerned voter base around taxes very fairly. And what is this really incredible education we're offering students?
Thank you, Leila. And I just, again, want to frame back, going to there is that we have become sort of a destination school district, and that revenue piece for tuition is important. So I think as we look at 7.15, 4, and 2, what are those impacts that would have that maybe people, A, would. So I think as we look at seven point one, five, four, and two, what are those impacts that would have that maybe people, A, would not tuition their students here anymore? And B, if open enrollment comes, where students, parents may opt to, to leave. So I think we can frame that in that way because again, that's one of those unknowns that is coming our way.
All right. So unless someone has anything else to say, we have a motion on the table. We have one board member attending remotely, so we'll be doing a roll call vote. And so can you just repeat briefly, not all the numbers, but just repeat your motion for a second?
Sure. It was a directive to have the administration come back with a seven percent, fifty-eight million, six hundred and sixty-three thousand, seven hundred and thirty-seven dollars. A five percent, fifty-seven million, five hundred and five thousand, seven hundred and ninety-six dollars. Four percent, fifty-six million, nine hundred and fifty-eight thousand, one hundred and twenty-two dollars. And a two percent, fifty-five million, eight hundred and sixty-two thousand, seven hundred and seventy-four dollars.
Okay. All right. So that is the motion on the floor. All those in favor, Leila?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yep.
Jessica?
Yes.
Ash?
Yes.
Tia?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
I'm a yes. Carrie?
Yes.
All right, motion of, we're approved the motion. Motion passes. All right. We are going to move back to our agenda briefly, which I've just lost here. All right. So our next school board meeting is December tenth at six thirty here, at which, at which point we will consider the proposals brought forth from the district. If necessary, we have another board meeting scheduled for December seventeenth at six thirty here. Also, we have additional board meetings in January, on January fourteenth and January twenty-eighth at six thirty here. And then our deliberative session is on January thirty-first. We do not have a snow date or.
It will, the snow date is the following Monday.
Okay.
Let me look at the calendar, and that does say library, it is in the gym. And also I believe the January fourteenth will be the budget hearing. Correct, Tim?
Yes. So January fourteenth is the budget hearing.
Snow date would be May, sorry, February second.
February second, snow day. Okay. Are there any additional questions, board member recommendations?
I would just ask if the snow days be put into the, in the calendar?
Yep.
Thank you.
I will add them on Monday.
Appreciate that.
Monday following?
Yeah.
Six.
Six P M, I think. Usually six P M. Okay. So I think that's all. So then I need a motion to adjourn.
So moved. I don't ever look at me.
Motion to adjourn by Ash. Can I get a second? Second by John, and we do have a roll call vote for this. All those in favor, Leila?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yep.
Jessica?
Yes.
Ash?
Yes.
Tia?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
I'm a yes. Carrie?
Yes.
All right, meeting is.